Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. If you could please take your seats, I'd appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Could you please take your seats? I'd appreciate it. I want to welcome everyone to this morning's board proceedings. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish a quorum?
Yes, good morning. Supervisors Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov, and today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 13th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes, and the remainder of the agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the time matters in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please rise and join Supervisor Rodriguez and lead the pledge?
Hand or heart pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, again, I'd like to welcome everyone to today's board proceedings. We have a full agenda, as we do most board days. And again, as a friendly reminder, we certainly welcome anyone to address the Board if you so choose. We simply ask that you please complete that speaker slip and give it to the clerk or one of the clerk's assistants, look at the rear chambers and to my left, your right. And we do respectfully request that you keep your comments to no more than two minutes. That way, everyone who wishes to address the Board has that opportunity. All right, with that, first item, please.
Our first item are public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda, and we do have speakers signed up. Our first speaker is Seth Alexander.
My name is Seth Alexander. I'm a business agent with United Public Employees. I'm also the co-chief negotiator for our contract negotiations with the county. We've been negotiating since December of 2024. We've met approximately 15 times, and we've had mediation with a state mediator and a last-ditch negotiation session yesterday with the county. We remain very far apart. We do not have an agreement. Our contract is expired. We haven't reached an agreement because there's a philosophical disagreement between the county and the union about what it needs to be done here. The county is not valuing its employees, the ones that run the county, sufficiently. The county is not taking the steps necessary to help them meet the cost of living. You know, last month, you guys approved $25,000, up to $25,000 in relocation expenses for executive management positions, recognizing that those positions were important. In your board letter, you wrote, "The county of Sacramento is committed to attracting and retaining highly qualified talent for the positions that are vital for the efficient functioning of county services. Many executive and senior management roles are essential to providing high-quality responsive services to the community." Seriously, many of those, many of management roles are not essential to providing services to the community. Managers aren't the ones that are removing children from abusive homes. They're not the ones that are helping adults that are experiencing elder abuse. It's our workers. They're not getting up early in the morning to transport a foster child across the county so they can attend their school. They don't help refugees navigate our benefit system in order to get benefits they need to survive in this county. They don't help homeless families. It is our workers that do this. The county will go out of its way to help its managers get relocation expenses here, but it's doing nothing to help its workers, the ones that actually make the county run, reach the cost of living. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, James Starr?
Thank you. Greetings, Chairman Serna and county supervisors. My name is James Starr, and I am a 40-year employee of County of Sacramento in DHA, and I also serve on the UPE 008 bargaining team. My bargaining team has been trying for six months to get a fair deal from County of Sacramento, and now it seems absolutely clear to us that you don't value our members or the work we do for the community. Our members have watched, as you voted yourselves, big pay raises while our working conditions got worse and worse. Our members understand now that your appreciation and recognition apply only to ourselves and to the top county bosses. My members are tired of being treated disrespectfully. As a very senior county worker, I am tired of it. Now it seems we have to fight. Get ready.
Okay, thank you. Tezra Sledge?
It's up to you.
Oh yeah, let me move this down a little bit. And then if you can just pull the mics to you, there you go.
Good morning. My name is Tezra Sledge. I'm a business agent with UPE. I've been working with Seth as a chief co-negotiator on this contract that we have been working on since December. And for your negotiator to come in at the 11th hour and say that the county is negotiating based on philosophy, I've never heard of that. Can either one of you tell me, what does that mean? How do you negotiate a monetary contract, mostly monetary contract, based on philosophy? When most people negotiate, that has to do with money. It's based on a budget. You pass a budget, you say what you have. Give us a number. You don't do this at the 11th hour and say, oh, it's philosophy for your social workers, for your human services specialists, the people that are delivering services to the citizens in Sacramento County. I have noticed since from the time that I started working with UPE that these departments have gotten really top-heavy in specialists and planners and division managers and program managers, but there's no room, there's no money to hire and to retain frontline labor staff that are actually providing the services to the constituents that voted you into these seats. Please stop wasting our time at the bargaining table. It doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Stephanie McCall?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you to my colleagues. Mine is a little different, a little bit more personal today. My name is Stephanie McCall, and I'm the chair of the 008 governing board. Today I come before you not as chair, but as an employee of this great county of Sacramento. I love my job. I'm a human services specialist. I administer and determine eligibility to those most in need, those striving to provide their own families with food, healthcare, and other critical benefits, things they need to survive. With my personal experiences and background, this work suits me perfectly. I can relate. What I never expected was to be struggling alongside those I served while working for this county. I was told by your chief negotiator that this contract cycle was driven by the county's philosophy and not about budget or money, that the county saw no reason to compensate us, other than what data proved, despite the overall cost of living increases here in California, that valuing the services we provide our community, your constituents, wasn't a factor. To add insult to injury, the county wants to silence, oppress, and suppress our lawful rights to engage with our employer on working conditions, which in my department, DHA, aren't optimal. On a personal note, unfortunately, I lost my husband, excuse me, of 27 years in late January this year. He was my life partner and the father of our 13-year-old son. I found myself in need of bereavement leave. I took five days to grieve his loss and to comfort my devastated child. We had no warning. He was not sick. He was just gone one Saturday night while we ate dinner as a family. Not only did I lose my husband, and my sweet boy lost his dad, but I also sadly lost his income. As a newly single mother, I've struggled financially in ways indescribable just to keep food on the table and a roof over our heads. I have prayed every night since for a fair and livable wage with this contract. Instead, I've been met with heartbreak, disappointment, and frustration. Under the county's proposal, I would have had to grieve my husband for three days, three short days. My prayers now focus on hoping that my son and I don't become food insecure just to keep the power on, pay the rent, and put gas in my car. My story is not unique, unfortunately. Lastly, I'll close with this. Thank you for the extra time. The county offered us $5 per paycheck toward a health savings plan in this contract negotiation. How generous, considering I can't afford to take my son to the ocean for the weekend to sprinkle his father's ashes at a place where we made so many precious memories as a family. That was his only wish. I could use that $138 a year to fill my car up with gas and take my son to his father's final resting place. Thank you.
Eric Booker?
When last I was here, Eric Booker, CPS social worker, when last I was here, we were here, made a comment to you about our negotiations and that your negotiator that you hired was a representation of you all. And so when we went back to negotiation table, the first thing that we were hit with was this restriction around bereavement. So that's a reflection of you all and what you believe is important, who and for how long we can have bereavement. So we negotiated in good faith, trying to ascertain numbers, because that's what the negotiations is supposed to be, benefits, trying to reach a common goal, at least what we thought was a common goal, until we were hit with the news that we were working on philosophy. What is that philosophy? If it's not numbers. But it kind of puts everything into perspective if the first thing that we hit with at the table is a restriction on bereavement. There's a different philosophy. We have a different philosophy. The philosophy of treating people as if they are tools, if they're a means to an end, that's the philosophy. Not working on our common humanity as partners, but do this and do that. Be happy about the reward that we give you, $5. This is a philosophy of exploitation, and it's a reflection of you all here, because that's what we're sitting at the table with.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Samara?
Ted Samara, Executive Director, Director of United Public Employees, and I'm going to thank my sisters and brothers for taking vacation time today. This is not like the DA coming up here and having his staff on your time come and speak. My folks had to take vacation time to come and speak. I've been coming to you all for some time, even meet with some of you individually, including the county exec and some of the deputy county exec officers. In regards to the working conditions, in regards to the lack of pay, the disvalue that your employees feel on an everyday basis when they come into work because they're being oppressed, suppressed in the workplace. We've talked about shit near there incidences at the welcoming homes. Yet, they still want to add more duties to social workers to clean, fix foods, clean rooms, make beds. Should be ashamed of your county executive here, who's your chief negotiator. When's the last time you had a closed session? Spend weeks to talk about negotiations. And I'll tell you what, you treat our clerical folks this way, there's no need to go into mediation. They make far less than these folks here. Yeah, I'm mad, but I'm more disappointed. I'm more disappointed that you do not value the line workers that make this county functionable. They are the blood that runs through the veins of this county to make it functionable. Probation officers can't get their work done without our clerical folks running that paper. The courts can't get their paperwork without our folks running the paper to them. You have vacancy rates in this bargaining unit in double digits, and how, they're not going to cut their positions. I watched the budget hearings last week. They're not going to fill their positions, and they're going to use the cost savings to fund for those attorneys and those police officers. We know this, right? We're not blinded by that. You received our declaration to strike, 10 days' notice. We think that's ample enough time. We've tried, and we've tried, and I think we were the bigger brother here during these negotiations, met with disappointing disappointment, anger, and heartache. Thank you.
Thank you. That conclude our off-agenda speakers?
That concludes your off-agenda speakers, yes.
All right. Madam Clerk, are we ahead of schedule?
We're ahead of schedule. Would you like to take your nominations?
Let's do that.
Okay, please go to Item 64. This is for nominations and appointments. You are continuing to July 8th, the Carmichael Recreation and Park District, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Kasumnas, Natoma's Community Planning Advisory Council, North Highlands Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to July 22nd, the Disability Advisory Commission, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Sacramento County Youth Commission, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to August 5th, Civil Service Commission, Galt Arno Cemetery District, Human Services Coordinating Council, Lock Management Corporation, AKA Association, Board of Supervisors appointee, and the Veterans Advisory Commission. And for your matters today, our first is Adult and Aging Commission. Mr. Chair?
Chiefs are recommending continuing the item until August 5th.
Thank you. American River Parkway Advisory Committee. Supervisor Hume?
I'd like to appoint Mark Berry and waive the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote. Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council?
Please continue the item till July 8th.
Thank you. Carmichael Community Planning Advisory Council?
Please nominate Catherine Ramirez to Matthew Burnett's seat and continue the remainder to July 22nd.
Thank you. Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council?
Please continue to July 22nd.
And Supervisor Hume?
Continue to the date that you have.
July 22nd.
Thank you.
Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council? Mr. Chair?
Chiefs are recommending continuing the item until July 22nd.
Thank you. Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee? Mr. Chair?
Chiefs are recommending continuing the item to July 22nd. Madam Clerk, did we skip an item?
No, which one do you have in mind?
County Service Area Number 4B.
That one, we are continuing to July 8th.
Oh, okay.
That was an automatic continuation recommendation from the chiefs.
Gotcha.
Okay. Let's move to Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to August 5th.
Thank you. Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council?
Continue to July 8th.
Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District?
Please continue to July 22nd.
And now we're at Rio Linda, Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council?
Please continue to July 8th.
Okay, Sacramento Environmental Commission. Mr. Chair?
Chiefs are recommending reappointing Christine Casey and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And would you like to continue the remainder to July 8th?
Sure.
Thank you. Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Supervisor Hume?
Continue to the date that you have, please.
Okay, let's continue to July 8th. Sheriff Community Review Commission? I'll start with Supervisor, Mr. Chair.
Sure, for the First District, we would like to reappoint Paul Curtis and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and then we'll go to District 2.
Reappoint Chris Baker and waive the process. Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and then we'll move on to District 3.
Please reappoint William Cho and waive process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and then we'll move on to District 4.
Please continue to July 8th.
And then Supervisor Hume?
Please reappoint Teresa Rivera and waive the process. Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, and now we're on to South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. I'll start with Mr. Chair.
First District nominates Joseph Gamble.
Got it. And Supervisor Kennedy?
Please continue to July 22nd.
Thank you. Sunrise Recreation and Park District?
Please continue to July 8th.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations and appointments. We could also move on to consent matters, Mr. Chair, if it pleases the Board.
It does please the Board.
Okay, we've got about five minutes, so I'm going to start off with my notes. I do believe our county executive has comments following the consent matters. So for Items 2 through 61, for Item 32, you're adopting an ordinance related to approval of a military equipment policy and authorization to purchase, acquire, and use military equipment in the future in accordance with the policy. You waive reading on this on June 3rd, and that concludes my notes.
All right, very good. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes, I'd like to, could you read Number 29 of the record?
Yes. Item 29 is to approve a resolution adopting revised improvement standards, Section 8, water supply.
Thank you very much. Don't want to make a big deal about this, other than I want to make a big deal about it, because this is something that, you know, these things can easily just come onto a consent calendar and pass through, and we don't realize how much work goes behind them on the staff level, and we don't realize the impacts that something that seems so mundane and bureaucratic ease is on our community. Something like this looks like a quick item, but this is, I understand, two years in the making of working with our county partners, including the North State BIA, to continue, and I'm sorry, Mr. DeFonte is not here today, to continue our efforts to streamline and make better the process in order to get more housing and other development built in a responsible manner, in a timely manner. So thank you to staff for your efforts on this, and just wanted to make that comment.
Great, thank you. Other members of the Board have questions or comments on consent? Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to make comments on Item, sorry, I lost it here. It's the MIH, the retroactive payment of $317,000. Which number was that?
Is that a social services?
Item 7. I'd like to make comments on Item 7 and Item 40, please.
Okay, I'll read both into the record. For Item 7, this is the authority to pay invoice over a year old from the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District totaling $317,639 for the Mobile Integrated Health Services. And for Item 40, let me get there quickly. Item 40 is the authorization to execute agreements and all related documents with the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District and the City of Sacramento Fire Department to provide continued support of hazardous materials emergency response.
Great, thank you. So for Item 7, I'd just like to point out that that money was previously approved and has been expended, and this is simply making up for an invoice that was submitted after the usual period of business, but I would just want to say that Mobile Integrated Health, or MIH, is making big strides in improving the provision of emergency services out in the field, and so I want to thank Metropolitan Fire District for that. And then on Item 40, I would also like to thank Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District and Sacramento Fire District for their almost two decades of providing this expertise for the hazardous materials emergency response, and thank them for the opportunity to extend the contract for another two years.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, I don't see any other members of the Board.
I'll go ahead and move the consent calendar, 4 through 61. Was there anything special we have to do with 32? No? No? Okay, I'll go ahead and move consent.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak on the?
We do not have anyone sign up.
Okay, very good. Then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good.
And now I'm going to read Item 4 into the record for our county executive. This is to ratify the appointment of Jamal Rowe as chief probation officer for Sacramento County and approve the compensation package.
Thank you, Flo. Supervisors, in your action of the consent agenda, you had included Item Number 4, which is the appointment of our new, or the ratification of the appointment of Jamal Row. I'll have Deputy County Executive Eric Jones say a couple of words and how we got to this process, and then I know Court Executive Lee Seal is also here to talk, and then we'll invite Jamal Rowe up to have it. And it seems like he has a fairly large entourage with him today. I worked with his father many years ago at Department at the State of California, so I think they want to take a picture afterwards, if you would allow that. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, and thank you, county executives. So again, Eric Jones, Deputy County Exec of Public Safety and Justice, and good morning to you, Chair Serna and the Board. And we're pleased to bring the new chief probation officer before you here. So as you know, the Superior Court is the hiring authority, and the court formed a hiring panel and included a county executive representative. We're very thankful of that, and I was able to be on the selection panel as well. Then the hiring panel made, after the selection, it was approved by the entire Superior Court bench. Just a little bit about Jamal Rowe, and you'll hear from him soon. Beginning in 1998, Jamal worked for Sacramento County probation as a probation assistant. In 2002, he transferred to the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, where he worked a variety of areas as a parole agent, investigator, and administrator. His most recent position was as the CDCR Assistant Deputy Director of Adult Parole Operations. He's a Sacramento County resident and very involved in community. With that, I'd like to next invite the executive of the Superior Court, Lee Seal, to say some words.
Blast from the past.
Hello, Chair Serna, members of the Board of Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be here. Lee Seal, I'm the executive officer of the Superior Court for Sacramento, and of course, honored and privileged to have served this county for many years before that. As Eric just said, we enjoy the opportunity to have this role in the selection of the chief probation officer, and I know that our presiding judge, Bumi Awani, would ordinarily be here, and I would be sitting up here in the back, smiling as I heard her talk about our new candidate, but I'm here on her behalf because she, unfortunately, is out of the office. So on behalf of the Superior Court, I really want to congratulate and welcome Jamal. He will do a terrific job. He is an expert in community corrections. He's deeply committed to the workforce and the staff. He is passionate about rehabilitation and someone who has, hails from Sacramento and is deeply committed to this region. As Eric said, he was unanimously supported by every judge on our bench, which says a lot about him. Finally, I'd just like to thank and echo Eric's comments about the partnership the Superior Court enjoys with this county, in no small part because of David Villanueva and Eric Jones, Siobhan, the whole team here. It really is a pleasure to see. It really is a pleasure to see that close collaboration between not just your leadership, but the teams, our appreciation for the great work that this probation department does. Of course, that department will always be in my heart. And all of our justice partners, from the public defender to the DA to the sheriff, we can't say enough about how much we appreciate our partners here in the county. So, with that, our thanks, and once again, congratulations and welcome to Jamal.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seal. While our new Chief of Probation makes his way to the podium, I just want to offer again our thanks to former Chief of Probation, Lee Seal, for all his years of service to this county, and the artifacts of your legacy remain in place largely, and for good reason. And so, we certainly appreciate looking back at your service here in Sacramento County, but we also are looking very forward. With that, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. I didn't expect my dad to know everybody here. He threw me off of that one. I did not know that this was a situation before, or the request of pictures and stuff after, so sorry for that. I'm incredibly honored and excited to be selected by the Sac Superior Court and county executives for the opportunity of being confirmed by you, the Board of Supervisors, as the next Chief of Probation in Sacramento County. I stand before you today, proud product of South Sacramento, a son of a strong father, who obviously already made his way around this place, the husband of a beautiful praying wife, Kiana.
Who we know very well.
I'm sure you do. And the father of my dear daughters. Please wave, Charlisse, Gabrielle, and Lauren.
That's a princess wave. Give us a real wave.
I was doing a wave so they could know who you are. Autographs after. They're who I work for, and they are the reason why my passion is so rooted in rehabilitation and help. I also want to take a moment to thank my partners from Dapo, they were on my right. And I have a couple behind me here. They have supported me and my crazy mind throughout my journey of my career to where I'm at now. Thank you to my probation partners, my new probation partners, who seemed to show, who showed up deep today. And a special thank you to Julie. Her leadership over the years of this department has guided me here. I've talked to her a lot throughout this process, so thank you, you little Julie, and for holding this place down for as long as you had to hold it down. As someone born and raised in this community, having attended multiple inner-city schools and graduating from Rutter Middle School, very important for you to know the schools I attended. Valley High School and Sacramento State. This appointment carries deep meaning. I am the true definition of a proud, homegrown kid that sees my younger self in many of the clients we serve. I'm related to lead this department that can and will change the lives of youth like I once was. Having the patience, understanding of the life experiences our clients often struggle, are often struggling with, fuels my drive to stand before you today. I have tremendous dedication to my hometown, a strong commitment to serving the people of Sacramento County with integrity, transparency, and accountability. I look forward to closely working with each of you, the Superior Court Judges and the talented staff across the department, as we move forward together to enhance public safety, support rehabilitation, and improve outcomes for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You don't get to just slip away.
I was trying.
I know you were. We got supervisors in the queue, but let me lead off by certainly, again, welcoming you. I've actually, over the years, had a chance to certainly get to know your wonderful wife. She's one of our cherished deputies, and we've had a chance to work together in a number of different capacities, most recently the DEI Cabinet, which we're very proud of here in Sacramento County. That's very active. Your predecessor was active, as she knows, in that cabinet, and so that's one of two requests I have of you, is I know you've got a lot on your plate, but it would be wonderful if we could have your active participation in that capacity in addition to all the other responsibilities you're going to have. That's request number one. Request number two is the other point of great pride for this county is our Black Child Legacy Campaign, which has made a huge impact in terms of reducing the disparity in black child deaths here in our community with a very concerted effort that I think you're well aware of over several years now. And, you know, I'm very proud to say that we continue to focus on resources for that initiative. That would also benefit greatly by your active participation, and I know your predecessor was also very involved with that. And again, once we hear from all of my colleagues, what I'm going to do is, chair's prerogative here, I'm going to then invite the family and the entire Board to come down in the pit here for a photograph. We can't let a beautiful family like that go without being photographed, so. All right, we'll start off with Supervisor Rodriguez.
Well, Jamal, I just want to welcome you to your new position, and first, I also want to thank Julie Wery for the work that you've done in holding down the fort during the, what sounds like, six, seven months-ish. Yeah, that's pretty awesome. But I want to share with you, you know, I've been in the region for almost 19 years now, and I've seen Sacramento take a really big change, but I do have a lot of respect for homegrown people who have worked their way up and have positions of influence to make our communities better. And so, I know you will do just that, and you will continue to make the Sacramento region better than it is today. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kenny?
Thank you, Chair. You know, first of all, welcome to Sacramento County.
Thank you.
You'll find that this Board takes a particular interest in your department because it's such a unique department and serves such a valuable and important role. I always like to say you're social workers with badges, which is unique unto itself. And the work that you do with our adult population and our youth is incredibly important to the public safety of our community, but also changing the lives of so many people. Also, just want to say that I, you know, appreciate your dedication, the words that you used, commitment, but also you're clearly, I've asked a lot of people and asked about you, and I've heard nothing but praise for your intelligence, your talent, and all of those things are clearly because you're a product of District 2, as am I.
That's right.
Welcome to Sacramento County and come back down to South Sacramento and visit us sometime.
I will, 100%.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to welcome you, Chief. It's an important role that you are filling, and we're happy to have you on board. I want to also recognize the efforts of Assistant Chief Wery in filling the gap in the meantime before we could get your appointment, but I want to key in on something that you said that I think was very poignant and very important for not only the work that you do, but for all of the folks that go out and serve probation every day, and that is that you see a piece of yourself in the people that you're serving. And my hope and my true desire is that hopefully, they see a piece of themselves in their future in you.
Absolutely.
And that's critical. So, thank you for the work that you're doing. Welcome to the department, and we look forward to your leadership.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Desmond?
Well, good morning, Chief. Just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I too asked around with some of my former state colleagues about you too, and heard just great things about you. And, you know, we talk a lot at this Board about our approach to a lot of the challenges we face. You know, there's frontline law enforcement approach, the social services approach. We're always trying to get them to work better together, but probation is where it all comes together. And I just really appreciate all of your comments and look forward to working with you. You will have a lot of support from this Board, no doubt about that. So, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, very good. Well, as promised, we are now going to take some photos. Here's what I'd like to suggest. We do a photo with the Board, with you and your family, and then I think then the Board gets out of the way, and then maybe you with your probation family that's here as well down in the pit, so join you down there.
I have a few cameras, so hang tight. That dad's camera. Let me work with dad's. Oh, boy. Dad's camera. There we go. There we go.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Am I good, or am I good?
You're good.
All right.
Perfect. Okay.
I would not want to be on the other side of the net. I think she's a junior. Think so. Yeah. I first got to know when she was Youth Services. And I, her father, her stepfather is a pastor in Oak Park.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item 2 is the Presentation of Resolution of Commendation and Appreciation to Major Rio Ray and Rachel Ray for Distinguished Service and Outstanding Dedication to the Salvation Army and County of Sacramento.
Thank you, Flo. Thank you, Chair. The Salvation Army serves more than 277 million Americans annually, offering compassion, hope, and support to the most vulnerable populations, including individuals experiencing homelessness, veterans, seniors, human trafficking survivors, and those recovering from addiction. They're a trusted partner, not just at the national level, but at the state level, and certainly at the local level. Major Rio and Rachel Ray have actually served this community for the past four years, and while four years doesn't sound like a long time, during that time, they brought compassionate leadership to the County of Sacramento and have spent countless hours feeding our neighbors, providing shelter, and pathways out of homelessness, and sharing hope and joy with everyone they meet. When I first met the major, I, you know, was automatically impressed with his genuine compassion for our community. Wasn't born and raised in Sacramento, but he was just as much Sacramento as anyone I had ever known. I was told at the time that the relationship between the County of Sacramento and the Salvation Army had soured so much over the years that we wouldn't work together to solve the problem facing and vexing our community of homelessness and drug addiction. Well, the major reached out to me when he had heard the same type of news, and both of us agreed, well, that's ridiculous. We have a great partner here who's stepping up to the challenge and has, in the River District, you know, providing job training, addiction services, and shelter for people who otherwise might not fit that bill. So, with that, I want to say sincerely, on behalf of the County of Sacramento, Major Rachel Ray, we sincerely appreciate your service. We wish you the best. We wish you weren't leaving, but as always happens, talented, skilled people rise to the top and get moved out somewhere else. But your commitment to Sacramento does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You get to speak first.
It is really honored to be able to serve so many people that are in need, and for the last four years, we've got to serve the homeless, the youth, those that are hungry and needy in Sacramento, but we've also got to partner with so many fantastic people. So, I want you guys to know that Sacramento's fingerprints are on us as well, and we go to continue to do good, and our replacements are excellent individuals as well, and I thank you for the partnership and the ability that we can work together to help people that are in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond?
Major, I just first want to add my voice to Supervisor Kennedy's, and first of all, I want to thank Supervisor Kennedy for bringing this and putting this resolution together for you. And I had the opportunity to go to the annual breakfast a month or so ago over Salvation Army, and of course, I'm always amazingly impressed by the work that you do, but you in particular, you are leaving your fingerprints on this community. I've had the opportunity to get to know you a little bit as well, and just thank you for your service. You have made a difference here, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Right. Item 3. Item 3 is the Presentation of Resolution Honoring the 24th Anniversary of World Refugee Month.
Okay, I believe I'm presenting this. I will debrief, and then thank everyone forward to. Colleagues and members of the public and staff, today I have the honor of presenting this resolution honoring the 24th Anniversary of World Refugee Month. I'm not going to go through all the wherethes in the resolve, but I think everyone on this Board, and I would hope everyone in the public, those that are joined, have joined us here today or may be watching, understand and respect the community that is Sacramento County as being a very welcoming community, one with a lot of compassion, one that understands that we enjoy freedoms here in our county, our state. we enjoy freedoms here in our county, our state, our nation, that many around the world don't enjoy. And in fact, on top of that, they don't necessarily get to enjoy peace the way we do. It may seem odd to say that today and now, given some circumstances here in our state, but there is no doubt, much more conflict, violence, heartbreak, famine, all those unfortunate circumstances that cause the great movement of people around the world from their desired homes. But we would like everyone around the world to understand that Sacramento County has a huge heart, and we demonstrate that by paying very close attention to the policies that we consider, the resources that we allocate as it relates to welcoming those that need, not just the charity of Sacramento County, but the family that is the constituency that we have the honor of representing. So I think that's what this resolution does. Of course, it acknowledges temporally how long we've acknowledged that, but I think it's worth mentioning those few words to give us all that reminder of who we are and what we care about. So with that, I'll invite the first speaker from the group behind me, and then after you speak, we'll take a photo with the resume.
Thank you so much, Supervisors. Good morning, Supervisor and Community... Sorry? Here you go. This is the issue with the short people. Good morning, Supervisor and Community Members. My name is Kalsary Amini. I am proud refugee, pro athlete, speaker, activist, and humanitarian. Today, I speak to you as a Northern California Refugee Organizer with CHIRLA, which stands for Coalition for Human Immigrant Rights, as a member of Executive Committee for Sacramento Refugee Coalition. I came from a place where girls like me weren't expected to speak up, let, or even play soccer. I broke cultural and religious barriers in becoming educated and pursuing my passion to play soccer. I failed face debt and also gender discrimination, inequality, but nothing stopped me from fighting for my dream of peace and dignity. In 2019, I fled Afghanistan because of a staying wouldn't cost me and my life, but I never gave up on my beliefs and the community and also advocacy for change. June is recognized globally as a World Refugee Heritage Month, with World Refugee Day honored every year, June 28. This day was designated by the United Nations to honor the strength, resilience, and courage of people forced to flee their home due to the war, prosecution, and disaster, and climate. It's not just about reflecting the past. It's about uplifting the refugee voices and investing in the future where all people, regardless of where they came from, are welcome and supported. Today, I stand with many others, people from all over the world, who, like me, had never left their homeland in search of safety and opportunity. Refugee brings strength, resilience, and culture richness to the community where all feel home. Organizations like CHIRLA and Sacramento Refugee Coalition work every day to ensure refugees are welcomed, supported, and empowered. Our mission is clear: build communities where everyone, regardless of background, can belong and thrive. Recognize World Refugee Heritage Month at the county level is more than a symbolic. It sends a message that we all see our refugee neighbor with values and their contribution, and we are committed to create a future rooted in justice and inclusion. Thank you so much for honoring this month with us and also standing with the refugees and immigrant community as the largest county impacted and welcomed refugee in the past few years. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Serena. Vice Chair Rodriguez supervises Desmond, Kenny, and Hume. My name is Ollyam. I'm a resident of District Three. I come today with deep gratitude and a personal story that I hope reflects the strength and perseverance of the refugee community in Sacramento County. I came to the United States by myself as a refugee from Ukraine in 2022. I'm a first immigrant in my entire family line. I'm from Zaporizhzhya, a region that is now fully occupied by Russia. My city is actually on the front line of the war right now. When I arrived here, I didn't know how anything worked. I didn't understand the systems. I had no idea how to start. But in those first days, I was welcomed by a small church-based nonprofit called Parasolka, which is in Ukrainian umbrella, which run by Spring of Life Church. They didn't just offer kindness, they gave me directions. They helped me navigate basics like getting a social security number, getting a driver license, employment authorization, medical coverage, and food assistance. These are the things that seem simple, but in totally unfamiliar environment, they felt impossible. One of my clearest memories when I just came to US, my first hours, I saw children playing in the park. And after months of war, fear, constant loss, I thought, life still exists, and it continues. I was part of the first wave of Ukrainians, refugees, to arrive in Sacramento. And in the last three years, I watched Sacramento County build an incredible response. I've seen how quickly programs and partnership developed. I've seen how quickly schools, community organizations work together, and this inspired me to give back and to advocate and volunteer. Today, Sacramento is a home for over 20,000 Ukrainians, many of whom reside in District Three and Four. We are part of this region's story right now, but many in our community are still living with uncertainty. Some don't yet know what their future holds, and their loved ones, who are here legally, who work, vote, and contribute, are struggling alongside with them emotionally and practically. So with respect and gratitude, I ask that you continue to support programs and fund them that assist refugees with housing, employment, and legal services, that you facilitate community integration initiatives that promote cultural understanding and inclusion, and also advocate for policies that provide a clear and compassionate path to permanent residency for refugees. This is what makes Sacramento strong, a county that welcomes, includes, and rises together. Thank you for making this place home, not just for me, but for thousands of Ukrainians and those who never, never thought that we would have to start over. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for having us. My name is Farhad Nurzada, and I came to Sacramento, California, back in October 2021, along with my wife and two-year-old kid. And today, I'm truly honored to serve as the Director of Refugee Support Services Program at Asian Resource Inc. and a proud member of Leadership Committee of Sacramento Region Refugee Coalition. Let me begin by extending my heartfelt gratitude to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Your ongoing leadership and compassion have made real difference in life of people, people like me, and people who came here with nothing but hope. A special thank you to Supervisor Desmond for organizing a wonderful event, the Unity Fair, where everyone feels seen, heard, and embraced. Actually, it was one of these committee gatherings where my journey took a life-changing turn. When I first arrived in Sacramento, California, I was completely lost, uncertain of what the future will hold. I didn't know where to go and who to ask for help. But when I walked into Afghan Welcome Center in 2022, everything shifted. I found not only resources, but a community and people who care. That moment gave me something that I hadn't felt in a long time, which was hope. Through that experience, I found a job at Asian Resource Inc., an nonprofit organization dedicated to serving those most in need, empowering refugees, migrants, youth, people of color, and low-income families in Sacramento. Today, I am proud to help others the way I was once helped. As Kufianan said, refugees are not threats, they are victims of threats. This code speaks volumes. Refugees do not leave their homeland by choice. They leave behind everything they love in search of safety and dignity. Refugees are more than survivors. We are builders, dreamers, and contributors. We bring strength shaped by struggle and a deep commitment to give back to the communities that welcomed us. In the last two decades, many Afghan SIV holders have came to Sacramento, California, who are now proud American citizens, raising families, voting, and hoping shape the future of this country. Although the resources and services are becoming limited every other day, we are doing everything we can help others like us to create opportunity, to restore dignity, and to make every new arrival knows that they matter. But we cannot do this alone. That's why I ask you, I urge you, to continue supporting the refugee and immigrants who are here in Sacramento, a place we all call home, and we are working every day to build a better life. They face incredible challenges, but they carry the same dream we all have: to live in peace, to provide for their families, and to belong. Thank you once again for proclaiming June as World Refugee Month and for continuing to build Sacramento, where every new beginning is met with open arms, opportunity, and dignity. Thanks so much.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today. It really means a lot to see everyone who care about welcoming others, especially those who had to leave everything behind and start over. My name is Neptune Amin. I'm the Refugee Program Director at Opening Doors, and I'm a resident of District Five. This work is deeply personal to me because I come from a refugee family. When I was a child, my parents came to the United States as a refugee from Afghanistan. My father served in Afghan Army Force, and my mother was a schoolteacher. They were educated, proud, and full of hope for our future. But when we were forced to leave our hometown, we had to start again from zero. We ended up in Nebraska. My parents didn't know the language. They didn't know how things worked. They had to rebuild everything from scratch, even though they were strong and smart, and it wasn't easy. But what helped them and helped us were the people who showed kindness, a caseworker who took the time, a neighbor who offered a ride, and a teacher who made my mom seen. That support made all the difference, and that's why I do the work I do today. At Opening Doors, we help newcomers, refugees, immigrants, survivors of trafficking, and asylum seeker rebuild their lives. We help from finding housing, healthcare, jobs, legal help, and the tools to build the future. And more than anything, we help them feel safe and welcomed. But we cannot do this alone. We're not the only one doing this work. Sacramento County and the surrounding region has played a major role in welcoming newcomers. In fact, over the past 40 years, our region has welcomed more than 58,000 refugees from Afghanistan, Ukraine, Iraq, and many African nations. This makes Sacramento one of the leading refugee arrivals areas in the entire state of California, and that's something we should be proud of, and that's something worth celebrating. And that's why today, we proclaim June as World Refugee Month, and it's a time to honor courage, hope, and contribution to those who come here seeking safety and a new beginning. Because behind every number is a person, a parent, a child, a dream. And right now, as family continues to arrive and others who are here living in fear of knowing that they will never be able to be connected with other family members, please consider by donating, if you're able. Every dollar helps us reach more people by allocating funds for programs that support newcomers, refugees, and immigrants in our county. By volunteering, your time, your presence, and your care can change lives. By speaking up for fair policies, for kindness, for truth, that is one of the scariest times our country's history, and it's in our vulnerable communities who are in need of our voices and protection. My parents started from zero, but because of people who cared, they never felt like they were nothing. That's what welcome looks like, and that's what we hope Sacramento becomes again. Let's continue that legacy, and let's make June a time to celebrate, empower, the resilience, hope, and community. Thank you, everyone.
Just a few more words from me. First of all, I think I join all of you. Hearing those words, you can't help but be inspired. And the three kind of character traits that I think just come out through those words is hope, courage, and humility. And, boy, that's something I think all of us could use right now, maybe take a lesson from everyone standing behind me. In any event, I would get kicked under the dais if I didn't start off by going to Supervisor Desmond. He was rightfully mentioned by a few of the speakers. And for those that may not know this, when we get seated to the Board of Supervisors, it's an organic process. We kind of fall into a groove in terms of some of the subject matter that we tend to focus on, and I think we all kind of, the five of us, understand what those grooves are. But certainly, the one that I know my colleague, Mr. Desmond, has really championed and just done an incredible job, one that, you know, in my time here, I haven't seen anyone really take on, really needs to be commended and recognized. So we're going to go to him first for comments, and then we'll hear from others. And then, again, I think it's worthy of a group photo. We're going to have the whole board come down and join everyone. So Flo, it's yours. Mr. Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for those kind words. It's hard to maintain your composure after hearing from you and your stories. Thank you for that. It is certainly moving. And it is such a source of pride for me to represent the district with such a large amount of newcomers here from Ukraine and Afghanistan, certainly. And thank you for mentioning the Unity Fair we had. It's amazing to me, in spending time with the refugee community, how many of them have a love for this country that's more profound than people who've spent their whole lives here, and how many of them actually embody and embrace the ideals of this country, more so than so many people who've spent their whole lives here. And that's inspiring. It is amazing to see it, and it makes my... It's so fulfilling to me, and it brings so much joy to me in this job. And, you know, thank you for everything you do, for all your advocacy. Thank you for all the nonprofit organizations that are involved in direct service delivery, helping our refugee community. And thank our county partners. I look to Siobhan first, certainly DHA, and the huge role we have with social services supports. But I look at the entire county apparatus, and I feel like we are all aligned in supporting the refugee community, whether that's code enforcement in our rental housing inspection program, or even our sheriff's department and DA's office in making sure that refugees are welcome and valued in Sacramento County. It has made us stronger, makes us stronger as a community, and has made us much richer as a community. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for bringing this resolution today.
Certainly, thank you for those words, Supervisor Desmond. Any others on the board? Yes. Supervisor Rodriguez?
You know, I am with District Four, and District Four has a very large Ukrainian population. And so, you know, over the past, I don't know, five months now, I've gotten in my community meetings and having met people and hearing the stories, hear stories that I have heard way before throughout my whole life, because my parents are immigrants, but my parents didn't come here out of being forced out of their country. And so I hear a lot of the stories, and it's heartfelt. And during this TOT, you know, where the distribution of funding for nonprofits, it was really a pleasure to be able to support Parasolka and the UA House. Because of the work that they do to ensure that when people come here, they get the support that they need to be able to get jobs and get housing and be self-sufficient, because that is the beauty, I mean, that is the American dream, is that you can come to this country, and you can work really hard, and you can do anything you want. And so it's really neat to hear some of the stories and where people are. And so it's really neat to hear some of the stories and where people are, and even the gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but you've been here, what, two, three years now, and you're a director of a nonprofit. Like, that, that is America. And so thank you for coming today and for sharing your stories, and we are here to support you.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to pick up on where my colleague just left off and, and say that in today's heightened political climate, there's a lot of uncertainty and unrest, and I know the immense strain that that puts on folks in your communities and your friends and relatives. And I just want to say that, you know, on our Statue of Liberty, it says, "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free." There is perhaps nothing more American than welcoming those who are seeking a better life for themselves and their families. And so thank you for sharing such eloquent, eloquent words today, and hang in there.
Great. Thank you. My colleagues want to come down? Supervisor Kennedy, give them. Okay. All right. Why don't you join us in the pit here? Then we'll let you figure out who would like to hold that. We'll put Mr. Desmond.
Two more cameras. All right, one more. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Okay, now we're moving on to Item 62. This is to approve fiscal year 2025-26 transient occupancy tax grant program funding recommendations and authorize execution of transient occupancy tax funding agreements.
Okay. Morning, Amanda.
Good morning, Chair Zerna, members of the board. Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer, and I'm here this morning to present our recommendations regarding the 2526 transient occupancy tax grant program. So first, I thought I'd start off by explaining a little bit what transient occupancy tax revenue is, which is the revenue that's derived from a 12% charge on hotel room stays and other short-term rentals in the unincorporated county. That transient occupancy tax, or TOT, revenue is allocated to fund the TOT grant program that we'll be talking about today, support other TOT-funded initiatives, and then cover other county cost needs. So the recommended budget that was approved last week included the allocation of TOT revenue and fund balance, including $1 million for this fiscal year 2526 grant program. The TOT grant program was approved in 2017 to provide financial support to nonprofit organizations for community-based programs and/or services in Sacramento County through a competitive application process. So this 2526 grant program represents the ninth year of the program that, as I said, provides $1 million annually, with half of that amount, $500,000 designated for the highest ranking applications, and then the other $500,000 designated for district discretion with $100,000 per supervisory district. So before we talk about the 2526 recommendations, I did want to share some of the highlights from the 2324 grant funding cycle. For that cycle, the county received 145 eligible applications with 73 applicants awarded funding for the, the grant term that was July 1, '23 through May 31, 2024. And overall, 93% of the total awarded amount was expended. Of course, there are a lot of programs to choose from. Just looking to highlight a few of them, just a selection here, I wanted to, to highlight Meals on Wheels by ACC received $40,000 to provide emergency shelf-stable meals to 1,700 seniors in the Home Delivered Meal Program. St. John's Program for Real Change received just over $35,000 for the Childcare Services for Homeless Mothers Project, which provided 20,000 hours of childcare, enabling 61 mothers to access job training, treatment, and support services. Elica Health Centers received $25,000 for the Wellness Outside Walls Comprehensive Healthcare Program for Homeless People Project, to provide primary medical, dental, dental, mental health, and veterinary care to homeless individuals and their pets, providing service to over 5,600 local homeless individuals. And then finally, Community Against Sexual Harm received just under $5,000 to expand wraparound supports that aid in successful transitions out of commercial exploitation. Combined with other funds, this, this funding was used to provide over 4,600 meals to 482 women and their children, serving 152 unhoused women, with the organization reporting that 44 of those successfully transitioned into permanent housing. So transitioning now to talk about the recommendations for this funding cycle, the application period for the 2526 grant program was from January 13, 2025 through February 14, 2025, with a workshop for potential applicants held on January 28. Overall, 289 applications were received by the deadline, which was a 75% increase compared to the 2425 grant cycle, and we think that this is in part due to some additional outreach efforts that we implemented.
Amanda Cuddink, interrupt for a sec.
Sure.
And hopefully, I'm not stealing any of your thunder here, but I'm looking for it. I'm not sure I see it. And, and I wanted to kind of have you answer the question before you get into the details of the grantees.
Sure.
I remember the first year we, we did this, I think we had somewhere in the neighborhood of almost $18 million in oversubscription for the $1 million. So do, is that number in the presentation for this year?
I don't believe it's in the presentation. It is in the board letter. It's $8.8 million for this year.
Okay, so it's, I think it's important for both those that are, or everyone who's being awarded some, but perhaps not all of what they've requested, and even those that aren't getting anything, to understand that it's still over an eight-to-one subscription ratio. So we, we just need to kind of all acknowledge the fact that there's obviously tremendous need. All of our CBOs need help, no one argues with that. But if we had others, certainly we would, you know, we would fund everyone and be off to the races. But this is about making tough decisions. I mean, I had something to say about that last week as well, in terms of budget, but I just think it's important to kind of set the table that way so people have a common understanding.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you.
So looking at those 289 applications, of, of that total, 258 were determined to be eligible, meeting the, the requirements of the program, and were reviewed by the subject expert panels, with the breakdown by application category shown here. The subject expert panels evaluated applications in March and April, and then the TOT Grant Review Panel, which includes Supervisors Desmond and Kennedy, as well as the Chiefs of Staff from the remaining three districts, met to review the, the recommendations of the subject expert panels, and the, the TOT Grant Review Panel then approved the expert panel recommendations with some modifications to provide funding to more applicants. These recommendations included awarding $500,000 to the highest ranking, ranking applications across the four categories, with the, the dollar amount per category shown here, based on the percentage of applications received in that category. The recommendations also included funding applicant organizations at the amounts recommended by the subject expert panels, again, with modifications to provide funding to more applicants, as described more fully in the board letter and at the amounts that are shown in Attachment 1. And then awarding $500,000 to the applicants at each board member's discretion, $100,000 per district. The funding recommendations also include the use of $1,600 of District 1 TOT Community Service Projects funds to supplement the funding in addition to the total $1 million grant program. And then in terms of next steps, we will provide notification to all applicants regarding approval of the awards and proceed with preparation of funding agreements for the awardees. And all applicant organizations can request their scores and the subject expert panel notes at any time by contacting our TOT administrator at this email address. So the TOT Grant Program recommendations are displayed here, along with the recommendation to authorize the county executive to enter into TOT funding agreements as approved in the budget. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any other questions.
Very good. Thank you, Amanda. Let me just do a check-in with the clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have members of the public sign to speak?
We do for this item. We have about five speakers, I think. Let me just double-check. No, actually, we're up to eight speakers now.
Eight speakers, okay, very good. I see Supervisor Kennedy is in the queue, but before we go to Supervisor Kennedy, one of the things I think, again, just in an effort to try and synthesize a very complicated process, in my opinion, with regards to the selection of the grantees for the $500,000 part of the, of this TOT pot, this happens every year since, since we've had the program is I will receive an email or, you know, a phone message from an executive director of a CBO that is upset because they, you know, understand, understandably feel that perhaps they got short shrift in consideration, that maybe they didn't get everything they requested, or perhaps they didn't get any of their request. But because of the complexities of the process and the multiple criteria that are considered, including things like, and, and please, Supervisors Desmond and Kennedy, correct me if I'm wrong, but things like, do you have, have you identified other funding sources to help match or help, you know, address the total cost, not just having the county pay the full freight? There's, I believe, I, I think there's still some consideration for a look back to see who's been funded in the past. And so when I hear those messages and see those emails, I don't disagree with the inherent benefit and the need that these chairs, you know, nonprofit CBOs, the work that they do. I, I don't disagree with that. But I'm, I, sometimes I always feel like I'm trying to overly explain things at this point, but I'll, I'll do it nonetheless. You have to, you have to kind of put yourself in the shoes of those that are making the recommendations, that they've, by matter, by matter policy, county policy, have been asked to look at this wide spectrum of considerations. It's not just about the merit of what you do. It's about that relative to others who make the same claim about the merit for their organizations and their missions. And so, again, I would just, you know, beg everyone's understanding that, that that's what this is, in, in addition to some other considerations, and perhaps because he's in the queue, Mr. Kennedy can maybe shed some light on that in addition to his comments. Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. Just a few things. First is, this program over the years has morphed, and, and in a, in a good way. We've made improvements, and, and it started out with a lot of improvements, and then lesser, lesser, and lesser, and we're, we're to the point where we're taking an imperfect process by virtue of the nature of, we're up here selecting winners and losers, which is part of our job, always. But so it's, there's nothing perfect about that, and the Chair is absolutely right. We say no to a lot of very worthy causes and good organizations. Just, that's the nature of having only $1 million for this program, and so many people has, who have applied. One of the, the changes that has been made over the years is the, the pre-grant workshop, which provides information and, and hopefully lessens the blow for those organizations that don't get it, and they have a better understanding that these are decisions that are, that are hard to make, but they're made on solid ground. And, and that, I think, I get less calls than I ever have before. I think it's largely due to that workshop, to really let people know the expectations and what's there. So that being said, I also want to say that we ask a lot, and, and I appreciate the board's has shown real strong deference to the, and also, by the way, your Chiefs of Staff, to the recommendations made by these panels. These panels put hundreds of hours into going over this on a volunteer basis, and when you have so many, I mean, over 200 applications, and they're lengthy applications, detailed applications, I, I want to give sincere appreciation to those panels. It's, it gets harder and harder every year to get people to want to do it, because it's not easy. And as we are up here, you know, going into it, you're going to disappoint some folks. But it's an important role, and they play such a valuable part of this process that we, we really could not do without them. So to those that are here, those that are listening, that are involved in the panels, and Amanda, please pass on for me, too, my sincere appreciation for their hard work and dedication to the community.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thanks for those comments. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, you again? I thought we were done with it for a couple of months.
How do you think I feel?
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, is it Wednesday yet? I just want to pick up on what Supervisor Kennedy was saying, is, you know, the need always outweighs the ability and the resources. But I just appreciate the work that the panels and that our chiefs and that those that weigh in and sift through these applications ahead of time do to maximize those resources, but also to try and, and make sure that they get spread out far and wide into the nooks and crannies of, of each of our individual districts, and, and in some cases even, you know, reduce funding amounts in order to try and stretch those dollars further. And so it's, that's not an easy task, and unfortunately, it is a, an aspect of picking winners and losers. But I just wanted to put that out there, that I do recommend, or not recommend, I do recognize the, the work that goes into this at the front end, that then allows us to maybe sit up here and, and try and get creative to squeeze even a little more juice out of the, the fruit. So thank you.
Supervisor Rodriguez?
I just want to share a little bit of comments about this process. You know, we have so many, our, our jobs get really tough because we have to make tough decisions all the time, every week, and this, this one was kind of, it was a little fun. It was fun because you see the organizations that get awarded the, the funding, and they're usually bigger organizations, you know, they probably have grant writers, they, they, they do a really good job of submitting applications. And then there's that extra pot that allows us to support the smaller nonprofits that really do so much amazing work in our community. So while it definitely is tough in the sense that you have to pick, pick some of these nonprofits, but it's, it's really, it was a really fun process to be able to allocate some of this funding to, to the organizations that just do amazing work, and, yeah, I really, I enjoyed this, so thank you.
Great, thank you. And just, just one point of clarification before we hear from the public. As a reminder, the other associated pot of funds, the $500,000 distributed equally between the five supervisory districts, $100,000 each, that's handled administratively, correct?
That is all part of this recommendation, so the, the attachment to the board letter is the entire $1 million.
Right, but, but the recommendation today, Amanda, is that it's, it's the time, point in time when each district is receiving that $100,000. We haven't necessarily made As a reminder, the other associated pot of funds, the 500,000 distributed equally between the five supervisory districts, 100,000 each, that's handled administratively, correct?
That is all part of this recommendation, so the, the attachment to the board letter is the entire million dollars.
Right, but, but the recommendation today, Amanda, is that it's, it's the time, point in time when each district is receiving that 100,000. We haven't necessarily made the decisions about how to divvy up that money.
You have, and that's, that is recommend, that is included in the attachment here. So all of that information was provided by each of the districts.
I'm just wondering in years to come whether or not, and I beg the, the patience of Supervisors Desmond and Kennedy, but it might serve us better, and we can think about this, maybe have a separate, maybe a separate process for that. And the only reason I say that is because by the time we get this, we have, you know, as was stated, winners and losers. Sometimes those that don't receive all or even a partial amount relative to their needs contact us very late. And so we're not really, you know, it's not emphasized necessarily for us, at least from my experience, until very late that that's a missing need. And that would help inform, quite frankly, you know, my decision about what to do next. So, you know, I don't know if that's something that the powers that be, separate from this board, but as part of this board, the two members, would maybe consider. Supervisor Desmond?
I would say, I think, because we have this discussion when we, when we get together with the chiefs, maybe some more time in between the recommendations from the panel and give the, the respective districts a little more time to come up with their own district-directed funding to either add to the competitive award or to just give a discretionary award altogether to one of the competitors, maybe that didn't get selected. So I think it's really a, a matter of giving us sufficient time, because that, that comment did come up, I think. We were a little compressed, I think, initially with the timeframe, and we had a follow-up conversation with you about that, Amanda. But I think that, would that be helpful? I mean, just?
I think so. I, I just, it's, it's so, it's so dynamic in terms of the, the feedback we get and the fact that we're talking about, you know, dozens and dozens of CBOs and nonprofits. And some of them are veterans of interacting with an elected body and this board, and others are new to it. And so that has a lot to do sometimes with when we learn about the nuances of their needs, so. Supervisor Rodriguez?
Yeah, I would, I would definitely agree with that, because minds came back to a crunch. It was like a back and forth, and, and one of them was, it was allocating funds to an organization that wasn't in D4. And then they had already reached their capacity, and then, so now I'm, you know, shuffling, and it was last minute, and I was pushing the, the deadline. But I think definitely a little bit extra time to, to, you know, review things.
Yes, absolutely. And to Supervisor Kennedy's earlier point about this being a program that has morphed over the years, I mean, I think we were already intending to reach out and get some feedback and planning for the next process. And one of those things that, you know, I know we're aware of is that we do need to, to allow for some more time. So, thank you.
Great, thank you again, Amanda, for a thorough report. Ma'am clerk, our first speaker on the line?
Okay, our first speaker is April Javist.
Hi there. It's a hard job, I know. I'm April from the Sacramento Literacy Foundation, and I just want to thank you for allocating funds to our WellSpace project. We're a three-person organization, and we do not have a grant writer. So that's, just to let you know, you, you gave a small group a reasonable grant. You know, research shows that reading is correlated with health, mental health, employment, and incarceration, all areas this board has responsibility. So I just want to thank you for your partnership in getting kids reading, and I look forward to working with you over the years.
April, real quick, before you leave the podium, remind us again what your total need was here?
For the, for the unincorporated and other cities, it's about 108. The city of Sacramento is giving us 414,000, so they're leaving us with a gap of 25 per year, but I think I can fill that philanthropically. The county and other, other municipalities, which I haven't reached out to yet, like Galt and Rancho Cordova and Citrus Heights and Oak Grove, and then unincorporated accounts for another 108,000. So, and that would put one book in every zero to five kids' hands who goes to a wellness visit at WellSpace, which, you know, sees 92% low-income kids. Those are the kids that we're trying to touch. Those are the kids that aren't getting touched by most of the literacy resources out there. And we just want those kids to have a book before they get to TK, so that they know what a book is, and they know how to hold it, and they know how to look at it right. I mean, it's, it's a curve, believe it or not, it's a real curve.
So, but if you're just to kind of narrow down your accounting understanding of, of that need relative to our decision today?
Yeah.
What is being recommended versus what you would, you would hope from the county?
You guys are giving us about 22% of what we need.
Okay.
So.
And what, but give me the real numbers.
Give you the real numbers? I just, I just did them, you, you guys are allocating 25,000 about to 108,000. So those are the real numbers. So we still have a gap of 82,000.
I'm sorry, how much?
82.
82.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, now that's mental math there that you're making me do.
That's very good. I appreciate that.
Supervisor Serna.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, April.
Vince Marchese?
Good morning, Chair Serna, Supervisors and County Leadership. My name is Vince Marchese. I'm here today on behalf of Midtown Association. We're a property-based improvement district representing over 1,300 property owners with the mission of making Midtown the center for culture, creativity, and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. We first want to thank everybody in the building today for the ongoing investment that's being made in Sacramento's creative economy and for the immense challenge of allocating limited TOT resources across so many worthy projects. We recognize that making these decisions is not easy, and we appreciate the commitment this board continues to show to arts and culture across the county. We were, however, disappointed to learn that our proposal for the Urban Dreams Art Experience as part of our Midtown Second Saturday programming was not initially selected for this funding cycle. This project is fully scoped, and will bring 14 large-scale interactive art installations to public spaces for 40 days across Midtown during August and September, directly supporting local artists and driving overnight tourism through measurable partnerships that we have with our local hotels. Last year alone, our Midtown Second Saturday programming brought in nearly 70,000 visitors and generated an estimated $2 million in economic activity at our local businesses. This grant would have directly supported artist stipends and out-of-market, out-of-market promotion to build on that success while reinforcing Midtown's role as a vital arts district and economic engine for the county. We will, of course, still find funding for artist stipends, but our ability to advertise the project and be able to attract out-of-market visitors will really unfortunately be impacted without these funds, and our ability to make this a significant tourism draw is severely going to be impacted now. Still, we understand the strength of the other applications, and we appreciate the level of care that went into the selection process. And as we look ahead, we hope that there may be other opportunities, either formal or informal, where this project could align with county goals around cultural tourism, economic development, and support for the arts. Thank you again for your time.
Great, thank you. Between speakers, I have a quick question for staff. Where's the man? There you are. Was there a minimum of 5,000 that we can consider from the district funds, or is that, or do we have no minimum?
There's a minimum of $5,000 for projects under this grant programming.
Including the district specific?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I add to that? But that's for award, per awardee.
Per awardee.
So two districts in several of the awards, two districts combined for 2,500 each.
Oh, well.
So it's a 5,000 minimum award?
Well, that's.
Right. Several, several of these awards.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, sorry.
Good morning, Supervisors.
It works best if you put both mics, yeah, right between the two. There you go.
I'm used to the state building. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Chris Lodgson, Policy and Community Organizing Manager with the Anti-Racism Coalition ARC, here to urge support for the mental health project outlined in our TOT Grant Program application, of course, and budget requests for $50,000. If I may, I'd like to read a statement from Dilpreet Sidhu, one of our mental health therapists, explaining how positively impactful funding this project could be for people in Sacramento who are formerly incarcerated and working toward a better future. As a therapist at ARC, I have the honor of walking beside individuals as they confront their deepest wounds and begin the courageous work of rebuilding their lives. The people we serve are not broken, they are burdened. Many carry the weight of untreated mental illness, generational trauma, and a system that punished them when they needed care. ARC offers comprehensive mental health services and support individual, group, couple, and family therapy, both in person and virtually. Trauma-informed groups include seeking safety, healing, healing and healthy relationships, and unmasking survival amongst others. But as we know, therapy alone isn't enough. That's why our therapists connect members to psychiatry, housing, substance, youth treatment, and community services, providing holistic treatment. This work is not just theoretical. In 2024, we provided 422 therapy sessions to dozens of individuals. Over 300 people participated in group programming. Clinical referrals increased 43%, and enrollment rose 48% with a 93% follow-through rate. Numbers are important, but behind these numbers are real people. One of our members was released after nearly 20 years inside. He came to therapy guarded and overwhelmed. Over time, through services, he found stability, secured employment, and now mentors youth. He told me, and I quote, "Therapy helped me become the better version of myself that I was never allowed to be." When people have access to healing spaces and trusted providers, they begin to make different choices. They move from survival to stability. This work is already happening, and we know it changes lives. If we want to keep breaking cycles and building safer, healthier communities, we must ensure these services remain available. This is why your support isn't just appreciated, it's essential. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, County Board of Supervisors. My name is Evelyn Morales. I'm representing Food Literacy Center. Food Literacy Center's mission is to inspire kids to eat their vegetables. Since 2011, we've been teaching children in low-income elementary schools cooking, nutrition, gardening, and active play to improve their health, environment, and economy. Students participate in a 10-week series of 45-minute classes where they learn hands-on cooking and nutrition skills. By the end of the 10 weeks, students improve knowledge, attitude, and behavior towards healthy eating. As we know, food insecurity is on a rise in our communities, and our students face food insecurity every day. From the Youth Development Student Services Center at Sac City Unified School District, they, they often tell us that students enroll into after-school programs to access food. And this makes our program not only educational, but essential. This past year, we reached 1,777 students in both North and South Sacramento through our Food Literacy After-School Programs. In Sac City Unified School District alone, over 30 schools request our programming, doubling our current reach. We are scaling strategically, and TOT grant funds allow us to deliver these hands-on cooking programs to more schools for the next school year. Our evaluation shows that this program works. 95% of our students fearlessly try a new fruit or vegetable each week, and 74% learn to eat a vegetable or fruit with every snack and meal. And these measures, they indicate a positive shift in attitude, behavior towards healthy eating, equipping kids with tools to protect their health and their lives. We're grateful for the supervisor's consideration of Food Literacy Center's grant award among the recommended grantees. Thank you very much.
Don Nahas?
Nahas.
Nahas. I got one right.
Good morning. My name is Don Nahas. I am a co-founder of Joshua's Heart. The other co-founder is Don Nahas, my wife. We started Joshua's Heart in honor of our son, who was homeless and an alcoholic. He died of liver failure 2016 due to the long-term alcohol abuse. But during the time he was on the streets, he took care of all of his family, and so at that point, we decided to keep his honor going. I am a lifetime resident of District One. I actually photographed your father, and he hired me to do events for him at, at, at certain times. So just want to let you know.
You and I need to talk. I'm an avid photographer. I could probably learn something from you.
Okay, well, it's been a while, but yeah, we could definitely talk. So we applied for the TOT grant, not sure if we got selected, but I would not consider myself a loser if we didn't. I think that everyone that has applied has been, has really great causes, and ours was for, is for the 2025 Homeless Connect. In 2023, we actually had the event at Sac State's Folsom Hall, where we had over 350 guests, our homeless guests, arrive. They were provided showers, food, live music, time for rest. City, county, state, and nonprofit organizations had events, or tents there, giving them information, also helping them for that day. We are doing this again on August 9th at the Sacramento State Alumni Center. And first of all, again, Chair Serna, I want to thank you for your support in 2023. It really was helpful to be able, to be able to do that project, and we are moving forward again. We're about, two-thirds of our budget has been funded, where it's about $60,000 to put this together. The biggest cost is our food. We have to pay $15 per meal because of Sac State requires us to use their food vendors, and we're guaranteed 1,000. But I would like to invite you guys to join us. I will send you guys all an email to your offices with an invitation to join us. But I want to thank you deeply for your time and your consideration and all this that you've been doing for the grant program.
Thank you, Don.
Good morning, Chair Serna, Vice Chair Rodriguez, Supervisors Kennedy, Desmond, and Hume. My name is Jackie Yun on behalf of Asian Resources Incorporated, a community-based organization in South Sacramento, Oak Park and Citrus Heights, serving immigrants, refugees, youth, and low-income families since 1980. ARI continues to be very grateful to be one of the recipients of TOT grants for our Youth Executive Academy cultivating and training future powerhouse for our community, California, and the world. Our program spans multi-district within Sacramento County. We work with kids and youth not only from South Sacramento despite our headquarters being in District Two, but also those from Oak Park and Citrus Heights. 95% of our program participants come from immigrant, refugee, and low-income families, and we're very honored to be the organization guiding and supporting them when they often don't have the safety net and support system they need. We understand that there are funding challenges, but still very thankful for the support for this year, and we hope to receive more support from the county next year for our TOT grant cycle as we plan to apply. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Greg Dewey. I'm the President of the Board of Directors of the American River Natural History Association. It's the organization that runs the Effie Yell Nature Center. Effie Yell Nature Center has been a, both a natural and educational resource for our Sacramento community for 49 years. Generations of stu, of young children have come to that center, and they've learned about the wonders of nature, but they've also learned how to live in harmony with nature. And conservation is part of our mission. We are a slice of native habitat along the American River, and, and so we're both a natural resource and an educational resource. In 2010, the American River Natural History Association took over from the county the, the maintenance and, and operations of Effie Yell Nature Center. As many of you probably know, in the fall, we suffered a financial crisis. Fortunately, we have recovered quite well through the help of our community. At one point, we had five weeks of cash reserves for operational budget. At one point, we had five weeks of cash reserves for operational budget. We have over four months now, probably the highest reserve we've ever had. But more than that, we have renewed our leadership. I'm a new president. We have a new executive director. We have nine new board members. But so we are on a path of recovery, but grant funding is very critical for us. And you have demonstrated confidence in us, and that's important. We appreciate the funding that you're giving us. It will help us with our animal facilities, which has been a core part of the-- So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Just briefly, Greg, thank you for being here. Thank you for all your work that you've done the last year to deal, or the last, I guess, eight months to deal with some challenging situations. And thank you for working with our Parks Director on some of the disruption caused by that very large project down there in Hoffman. It's going to be a great thing when it's all over.
I know.
We need to keep working together to get through it.
We had a great nature fest despite all the disruption. We had great attendance, so we're working through it.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisor. My name is Christine Nguyen. This is my third day as CEO of My Sister's House. We are a small yet mighty organization, and I did write that grant as a volunteer of My Sister's House back in February. I think probably that's why I got the job. I was willing to put in some time to uplift our community. And to all board members and county leadership and experts panel, thank you so much for your time. I know it's never an easy task to review projects that are all grant-worthy and then have to not give some to us, not give funding to some and reduce funding to others. I feel the same way as a program director doing great work in the community. We can't serve everyone. Doesn't mean that none of the, doesn't mean that the clients are not worthy of our services, we just can't. And I think we just have to share in the resources that we have and make do. So thank you so much for considering My Sister's House and the TOT funding stream, and we continue to serve the community and hopefully to get your ongoing support in the future. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Does that include our speakers?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chair.
All right, very good. Well, I suspect we, there's a few of us that want to call an audible here. So I know I do, and it has a lot to do with hearing from April, our first speaker with the Literacy Foundation. Before I get to my colleagues, and I'm going to be looking for ideas. I have some ideas. I know Supervisor Hume does. Maybe others have their own ideas about maybe how to adjust the recommendations. But I want to thank everyone that's joined us here in chambers today to, again, remind us of all the great work you do and the partnerships that we enjoy, both past and present. And again, it's a good day because we're being asked to appropriate scarce resources to continue with your good work and fulfilling your missions. But sometimes it can be frustrating, and we get that. We're empathetic to understanding what those frustrations are. And I've said, I think, enough about that. But we'll start with Supervisor Hume and then Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I just wanted to pile on to the comments that were made earlier relative to the process, and no disrespect to my colleagues that serve on the subcommittee, but I know there was some consternation among our chiefs as far as the timing of things, when we were given information and when we were allowed to weigh in and that sort of a thing. So whatever we can do in the future to iron that out, I'd appreciate it. And I want to thank everyone that took time to come out and speak here today. Some of you just wanted to say thank you. Some of you wanted to say thank you and, and some of you just wanted to say please reconsider. And none of your words fell on deaf ears, but as has been said, you know, obviously, we only have so much that we can do. And the risk of this, and maybe this is why the $5,000 limit is in place, but I do want to come back to that. The risk is that through this program, we could be a mile wide and an inch deep and really not do anything anywhere. And so sometimes I feel like we have to sort of lean in to certain organizations at certain times and spread that quote-unquote fairness over time, which is a phrase that another person in an organization likes to use. But I know that this is one area wherein we have the $5,000 floor, but we also have another pot of money, I believe it's the community service grants, that have a $1,000 floor. Can we cross-populate that money? In other words, if we don't get to where we think we want to be to support an organization here, I assume that many of these organizations also would be eligible for that money, for sponsorship and that type of a thing?
Correct. Supervisor Hume, so if I understand what you're asking, you're asking can, could a supervisor choose to use some of the community service funding to supplement a grant under this program? And yes, so in fact, that's part of the recommendation, is that there was about $1,600 already identified from District One, but that is something that, yes, we could do if others were interested in doing the same.
Okay. And I appreciated the reminder about the $5,000 floor because I had some of my ideas to reduce the funding from five down to four, and I can't do that. So I had to go back and rework the math a little bit here.
And just to clarify, it's $5,000 per award?
Correct.
Right? So yes, there can be a lower district contribution as long as the combined amount is at least $5,000.
Correct, thank you. And so I don't know, and I know the Chair has some ideas, and maybe we can get to the $82,000 delta that was mentioned, but to do it from this program alone, I think would take more time and wrangling than we have today and that we would care to do, given the amount of thought that's been put into this distribution or recommendation. But I have a couple of things that I'd like to put out there. And so from the money that I do have from directed funds that I can reduce the award, if I were to reduce the Elk Grove Food Bank from $10,000 down to $9,000, the airshow, and again, if you knew how painful these reductions are for me, these are all things that are near and dear. The airshow down from $10,000 to $9,000, and then the Locke Foundation from $10,000 down to $9,000, that would come up with $3,000 additional. Then in the category where the awards were put out to $6,000 in order to make the money go further, if we were to reduce Running for Ret and the Community Spay and Neuter from $6,000 down to $5,000, that would be an additional $2,000. And so now I've come up to an additional $5,000. And then I would like to explore my colleagues' thoughts on reducing the Front Street Shelter, the Friends of the Front Street Shelter, from 25 down to 20, which would be an additional $5,000. So that would be $10,000 that I've identified to get us closer to the full funding request for the Literacy Foundation.
All right. First of all, I appreciate you Supervisor Hume doing the quick calculus that I was trying to do over here with a similar objective. And I'll have more to say here in a minute, but I do want to get to Supervisor Kennedy. But thank you for those suggestions.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, I don't know where the conversation's going to go. I just want to say that if there are districts who feel that they would like to put off their awards from their $100,000 allotted pot, could we bifurcate that from the rest of the recommendation? Just because, you know, my staff and I are quite happy with the selections that have been made from District Two. And, you know, to delay it would just delay the money getting out on the street. So could we, if it were to go there, could we--
So if I'm understanding your question, I think for sort of independent awards, we could, if we're talking about funding that would supplement something that's been recommended. I think, you know, I think--
I just want to, here, I'll just bluntly say it. Regardless of what the other four districts do, can District Two go forward today?
Yes, I believe so. I'm trying to understand what the other districts are doing. And I guess what I'm trying to say is if a District Two recommendation is also impacted by somebody else's recommendation, that might complement, complicate things.
Do you see kind of why I asked the question earlier?
Yes.
I don't think that's the case.
It is not the case.
Right.
Okay. Then if that is not the case, then yes. I think if anything that is being proposed to be changed doesn't impact the District Two recommendations, then yes, that can go forward independently.
Procedurally, I don't disagree with what I think is the suggestion. It may make matters easier for the four remaining board members who perhaps are interested in some refinement or adjustment. That's why I think moving forward, having these two pots of money be separate decisions would be helpful. So I'm hoping, CEO's nodded his head, so I'm hopeful that could be achieved because, again, when they're taken like this, you know, as much as I appreciate on-the-spot creativity, sometimes having the time to work with our colleagues. And again, this is an artifact of the freaking Brown Act, which is great. It's a necessary sunshine law. But we can, the only time that the five of us can get together and talk like this is here. But it forces us then to, like, do quick math, hear very differing opinions about districts wanting to move forward as is versus others that want to adjust. So it's just not a good way to do it. So I don't disagree with what Supervisor Kennedy is suggesting. I'm going to look to County Council and ask if we can, if it's possible, and if there's, you know, I'll look to my colleagues certainly, but is it possible to split the decision today so that District Two, if so wanted, can move forward and the rest of us can come back at, maybe as soon as tomorrow? You know, I don't know--
Yes, we have a board meeting tomorrow, so you could certainly continue this item till tomorrow. And in that case, I would recommend, well, I'm not going to speak for Supervisor Kennedy, but if it's coming back tomorrow, you might want to wait. Make it easier for the--
I'm just putting it out there.
It's up to you, but we could certainly do it, bifurcate it today, or you could come back tomorrow if it can be done.
All right. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Okay, I have a rookie question. What are we doing? So we were given, so we know the allocation that came from the merit-based recommendations, and those cannot be touched, correct?
So those recommendations are--
Those can be, okay.
--for the board today.
All right. Then we have the district-based recommendations that we allotted to the nonprofits per each district. And so what are we doing now? I'm not clear.
So one point of clarification that I will make is that some of those merit-based recommendations have district funds that are supplementing them. So in some cases, we have awards that are combined. But what is the recommendation before the board today is for the merit-based and the district-based awards. I think there's some desire to amend the district-based awards.
Okay. So if--
And potentially merit-based.
So if I am good, for District Four, if I'm good with the decisions that were made, I'm good. Is that correct? Yes, okay.
That's what Supervisor Kennedy suggested.
Okay. So I'm good with mine as well.
Okay.
So, well, I want to hear from Mr. Desmond first.
Well, it's a difficult, it's a difficult process. We've had a lot of discussions about it, and it seems like we have this discussion every year as well. I think the problem is if we try to bifurcate, I'm just looking at you, Amanda, there's a few District Three awardees where I'm only, it's only 2,500 because the intent is to combine with another district, whether that's two or four. So if we, if we maybe approve the District Two and District Four, it may throw things off a little bit. We'd have to scrub it to see if any of the district-specific awards are under that $5,000 amount, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Supervisor Desmond, just real quick, I did a quick search of both District Two and District Four, and all of them are at least $5,000. So I think the concern that Amanda was bringing up, that it doesn't affect those two, however the combined ones may.
Right. Because I'm fine with my selections as well, but I think several of mine are at the $2,500 mark.
Hopefully staff is understanding through this exchange why it's so frustrating, and the process is less than perfect, that's for sure.
I was just going to interject. So Supervisor Hume, have you said all of yours yet?
I did.
And have you said yours yet?
No.
Well, do you want to say yours, and then we can put them on the record and go forward?
Sure.
And then we can vote on it?
Some of what I was going to suggest is contingent on everyone participating, but it's clear that's not going to happen. So it still does, you know, means that perhaps in cooperation with District Five, we can maybe assist a little more a particular CBO. But what I was going to suggest is that, given the need of the Literacy Foundation, and personally, I just, I think the mission is laudable, and part of that is very personal, just based on how important literacy was to my late father. Mr. Kennedy knows everyone reads, everyone works, everyone votes. That was kind of his three-sentence charge. And so I do think that, given what April shared with us about putting a book in the hands of every child zero to five at a WellSpace facility when they visit, is a terrific idea that deserves all of our support. And I'm not suggesting we don't all support it. I think we all do support it. And there's, you know, again, as a reminder, they did receive some recommended funds, but there's still quite a large delta there. What I've mentioned to Supervisor Hume is that because of the zero-to-five nature of it, it begs kind of the question, well, shouldn't First Five have some skin in the game? And absolutely, as Chair of the First Five Commission, yes. It would make my job a bit easier, quite frankly, to go back to the commission and say, listen, the board is putting some skin in the game here because we find it of critical importance. It's serving the very population that First Five, every First Five in the state, certainly ours, is designed to do in terms of early education, early childhood development. And so my suggestion was, and I kind of scrubbed some of my district recommended funds, and I had to start with a number. So the number I started with was the 82,000, divided that by five, it's 16,4 each, divided that by two, because then First Five would have half of that freight, that's 8,200 per district. So I scrubbed my district funding for, to find 8,200. And if the balance of the board was agreeable to this, which it doesn't sound like it is, then we'd get there. And with the commitment that I would certainly go advocate fiercely with April's help, with my colleagues and our executive director at First Five, to fund the balance of the difference. So for the record, because Council asked for it, I was looking at taking Alchemist CDC from $10,000 to $7,500, taking SAC Regional Family Justice Center from $10,000 to $7,500, taking Hacker Lab EDU from $10,000 to $7,500, and then taking the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association from $6,600 to $5,900 for an even, that's only a $700 reduction, but that gets us to the 8,200, which I mentioned was kind of the per-district go-to, based on the math I've just explained. But I don't know that that's anything but academic at this point. Supervisor Hume.
Back to the academia, without affecting any of the other districts' allocations for district-specific, can we get buy-in on my suggestions of reducing Running for Ret, Community Spay and Neuter, and Friends of the Front Street Shelter?
You mean out of the--
Out of the merit, that's correct, out of the merit-based.
Not for making?
None of them.
Wait, the merit or the district?
No, the merit.
The merit, which is the big one. Okay.
Just-- I mean--
Just, I'm sorry, sir. Out of respect for the process and everything that's happened up until now, and the work that the panel and your chiefs of staff have put into this, I wouldn't support that myself.
I could. For what it's worth.
Okay.
I mean, if that's, if that's where we land, that's where we land.
Well, and here's what I can commit to is whether we get there through reducing the merit-based or whether I have to chip in from the other pot of money that allows the lower amounts, I'll make those mounts whole for Community Spay-Neuter and Run-In for Ret. So it'll be 6,000 either way. It's just a matter of whether or not we do it with the panel recommendations or if I come out of... But I can't, as I understand it, well, I guess I could. I could just take the money from the other and go straight to the Literacy Foundation with that. All right. So whether the board wants to do it or whether I have to do it individually, I think the money will be there.
And if I could suggest Supervisor Hume, the allocation of your community and neighborhood funds does not need to be part of this recommendation necessarily. So if you would like to use those funds separately to supplement something, I think we could work that out after this action.
Okay. So we can take that offline. The last thing I will say relative to the panel recommendations, I do appreciate the work that was put into this. I guess, and there's no question as to my love of animals and my support for those that care for animals and trying to reduce the unneutered population. I guess the fact that Front Street is a city of Sacramento-run facility is why I looked at that as a possibility. So just wanted to put that out there.
Supervisor Kenny?
Just briefly for that, because that's a good point, and everybody saw a flag there. And I'll tell you where my thought process was, because I immediately thought the same thing. But then I remember also, first of all, these animals that we're saving and they're spaying and we're, they don't know about, you know, political boundaries, you know? So, but that being said, that, I recall early on my tenure when we had a head of our own animal control who refused to do, to work in the, in some of the unincorporated part of Sacramento County in my district, who refused to take, to go out and spay and neuter in the community in some of the unincorporated area because it was too close to the city of Sacramento. So, you know, that type of thinking, I just don't think that it's, that's why I took the thought that you had and the concern, and I'm comfortable with it, just personally.
Okay. Well, I think regardless, I'm, oh, sorry. Supervisor Desmond?
And thank you Supervisor Hume for bringing that up. The, I think the original recommendation for Front Street Animal Shelter was actually much higher. We ended up, through our deliberative process, Supervisor Kennedy and I and the other chiefs, we reduced that, I think, by 50%. So in recognition of that very thing. And I think for my, for me, I think it's perfectly reasonable to have an expectation from the Front Street Animal Shelter that they will be an outlet for the county as well. I mean, and I do think a lot of the animal groups should be working closely together. But your point is well-taken, and that point did come up multiple times during that kind of process when we were going through this.
Okay. So I think I have a better picture of where we're heading today. So I don't know that there's a need to go into tomorrow. But hopefully, the record was paying close attention to my adjustments, because I want my adjustments for my district 100,000 to reflect the changes that I have suggested to certainly not get Literacy Foundation, everything they need. In other words, we can't cover the delta of 82,000, but we'll get a little closer. And with Supervisor Hume's help, which I do appreciate, I think, you know, there'll be some kind of similar assistance that comes from District Five. So I don't know if that, if you need clarity?
I apologize, I do, because my brain's not working as fast as either of yours today. I'm very sorry. But Supervisor Hume, could you go over your adjustments so that I have those?
Sure. So as far as what I don't need, as far as what I don't need...
Need concurrence with the Elk Grove Food Bank, reducing it from 10 to nine. The Capital Air Show, same thing, from 10 to nine. And the Locke Foundation, same thing, from 10 to nine.
Okay. And that additional $3,000 would go to the Literacy Foundation? Okay. Thank you. And then Supervisor Serna, just want to make sure that I captured yours.
Sure.
Why don't I let you say, rather than me butchering it, I'll let you. I apologize for you having to repeat yourself.
Alchemist CDC goes from 10,000 to 7,500. Sacramento Children's Home goes from 15,000 to, I'm sorry, Children's Home doesn't get touched. SAC Regional Family Justice Center goes from 10,000 to 7,500. Hacker Lab goes from 10,000 to 7,500. And the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association goes from 6,600 to 5,900.
Okay. Thank you. I did have all those. And the difference going to the Literacy Foundation?
Correct. You're going to add all those numbers, that's the additional funds that goes to the Literacy Foundation. And I'll just say too, for the record, that I will still go try and champion First Fives, I think, needed more active resource consideration for the Literacy Foundation, especially for programs that are zero to five. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate the discussion. I think, you know, I too support the Literacy Foundation. I just want to make it clear for the record that, you know, the nonprofits that I'm supporting with district-directed funds, in the unincorporated area, this is all they have, you know? And so I feel, you know, they don't have support from a city, there's nowhere else to turn for assistance. That's why, that's why I'm not going to divert some of my district-directed funds to the Literacy Foundation. But I certainly support all these changes and support the merit-based award to the foundation and support the work you do. So I just wanted to get that on the record, first of all. And I'm happy to move approval of the item with the recommended changes from District Five and District One. And then I also wanted to ask a clarifying question, maybe for the clerk, because I've served on the panel with Supervisor Kennedy for four years now. Is that an own-ranks appointment to that, or I can't remember flow, is it?
I don't think so. Let me double-check. Let me see if I can pull that up real quick.
And the reason I bring it up, because I don't know if any of anyone else would like to...
Oh, no.
...take my place on the panel, because it is, I think it would be helpful for us all to have a little more experience being involved.
With a caveat that the process changes.
I mean, I think what might...
It's changed every year, I think.
I think what might even be good is to, you know, that way it changes, is to have maybe the chair and the vice chair on it every year, and that way it just continuously changes.
Just to add to our responsibility.
I'm happy to...
And then make some changes.
I'm happy to do that and incorporate it into a motion if need be, or we just have an informal agreement.
I think that has to be agendized, it's not...
It's not on the...
It's not even an own-ranks thing, okay.
No. I'm looking at our own-ranks report from last week, and it's not on here.
So it's just a friendly agreement amongst board members?
Mm-hmm.
Something that you did in session.
Friendly agreement? I don't know. Okay. Well, I think there's, I think there's some good ideas, you know, for maybe sharing in that responsibility. Okay. And I just, and I appreciate Supervisor Desmond's clarity on, as usual, acknowledging kind of the rationale behind his focus on the CBOs that he has relative to the nature of his constituency, primarily unincorporated residents and services needed in the unincorporated county. And just so people don't walk away thinking that we're so parochial at times that we just stay focused on the binary nature of our constituency, either being, you know, unincorporated or municipal. Most of the programming, as we heard from April, for this program will be in the unincorporated county. I have about, I don't know, less than 10,000 residents that live in the unincorporated county. So I'm just pointing that out because I realize it's a need that's not just in my district. It's a, it's a need in my colleagues' districts that represent a much, much different constituency, so.
I'll second that, Chair.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. One last thing that I'll say is just keep a little bit of something in your community service grant dollars, because coming up in March will be the Authors on the Move event for the Literacy Foundation, and maybe we can sponsor a table and all of us attend and support.
That's a good idea. Good idea. All right. So that was a second to the motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second. We've heard from the public. Amanda's clear. Okay? No meeting tomorrow, or no agenda item tomorrow? We do have a meeting. All right. So please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next item.
All right. Our next item, 63, this is the Sacramento County Sexually Transmitted Diseases and HIV Update.
I think it's still morning, so good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Dr. Olivia Casiri, County Public Health Officer, and I'm here to present to you an update on the sexually transmitted infections and HIV/AIDS program. I thank you for inviting me to give you an update today. So I wanted to start off with a question that I'm often asked, is why are the STI rates so high? And so in these bullet points, I tried to summarize some of the important points about STIs and also to highlight why we find that these STI rates are so high. One is that the STIs are caused by a number of bacteria, viruses, and parasites, so it's not just one organism. The other is that many times when individuals get infected, they actually do not show any symptoms. So the only way that one can find out if they do have an STI is that they get screened. And so, of course, if they don't have symptoms, they may not seek care, and so that gives more opportunity for spread. The other also is that oftentimes the symptoms might be mild, or there may be, they may mimic other diseases, especially when you consider syphilis and HIV. For example, sometimes a person might have a rash and they think that it's due to an allergy, and so that will delay their seeking care, and during that time, there's opportunity to spread the disease. The other thing also is that there is no immunity. If someone gets infected, they can get reinfected even after getting cheated. So sometimes we have people who get the same STIs two or three times in the same year, especially if they continue with certain behaviors that put them at risk. And also that STIs, if somebody has one STI, it can actually put them at risk for additional STIs. So oftentimes, we get people that have multiple STIs. So again, these are factors that increase the risk for individuals, especially our adult, young adult population that is sexually active. I also wanted to point out on this slide, there are some diseases that, at the bottom listed, hepatitis B, hepatitis C, herpes, HPV, and MPOX that can be transmitted sexually, but they're not included in the main ones that we report about, which is chlamydia, gonorrhea, syphilis, and HIV. So this map shows the rates by county for California, and you can see, I'm not sure if you can see the Sacramento, but it's clear that Sacramento is one of the counties that has the higher rates. And one other thing also to point out is that oftentimes, we talk about it as the I-5 corridor, where you find the counties that have the higher rates. We don't have all the answers to this, but I think part of that is because you do find that this is where you find the larger counties that have a higher density in population. And also with the freeways, there's more travel, more people meeting up, especially when it's anonymous, and that increases the risk for transmission. I have a few charts here, and actually with the board letter, we did include some of our fact sheets that have a lot more information. I'm just going to mention a few points over here about the trends, because that's another question that we've gotten. And as you can see from these charts, for chlamydia, gonorrhea, syphilis, and for HIV, especially for chlamydia, gonorrhea, and syphilis, that there was a drop, especially in 2020, and we all know what happened then with the COVID. There was a lot of, because of the shutdown, a lot of people delayed or did not get care and did not get screening. And also, of course, since people were staying home, there was less likelihood of people traveling, and that did contribute to the slowdown in the rates. One good thing that we see is actually seems to be sustained even after the COVID pandemic has ended. And we don't have all the factors for that again, but we like to think that part of that is due to increased access to care and some of the education that we're able to provide. So this slide shows you the main units that we have.
Excuse me, Doctor. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yeah, I apologize for interrupting, but it's only going to be on that previous slide that this is going to come up, so if we could go back to that slide.
Sure.
Just I have a curious question. Do you have a footnote there that since 2019, chlamydia is no longer provider reportable, making it only lab reportable? Can you explain that?
Prior to 2019, all labs were required to report and healthcare providers were required to report all positives to us. Now the requirement is only for the labs.
What changed?
It was changing the requirements, the regulations from the state.
State, not federal?
State.
State?
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you for pointing that out. That probably also contributed to the reduction in numbers that we see.
Sure. We're not necessarily seeing less numbers, we're seeing less reportings, perhaps.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
But then you do see it for the reduction in gonorrhea as well, so...
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
It is, but it is a contributing factor. Thank you. So we have the prevention, surveillance, and Ryan White Services. And I just wanted to go back a little bit in time. When I started in 2012, these units were actually very small. I think with the three of them, there were a total of maybe 10 staff, and they were all operating separately and in silos. But I wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for, over the years, the resources that you have approved for us to actually grow the program. One of the resources that you provided allowed us to have, create two very critical positions. One, the STD Controller, she's not here today, but she's also my deputy. And then the other is the STD Manager, who is here today. These two positions were very critical in being able to help us to execute our vision, one, to integrate these units, and the other also to grow the programs. And as I go through this, you will be able to see how much we've been able to work in terms of adding additional funding and being able to provide more resources into the community. The other vital resource that you approved for us, and Supervisor Serna, you may not remember, but this was actually a specific request from you, was for the Sexual Health Clinic. And you provided the seed funding to allow us to start that clinic. We started with a modest amount of about 600,000, just a few staff and some borrowed clinic space, but over time, we have really grown that. And I'll be able to describe some of the funding that we have right now. I don't have pictures of the clinic, but definitely welcome you to visit the clinic and see the work that is done there. The clinic is very critical and was very critical, especially during MPOX, because what we found is a lot of people were having challenges with being able to get care through their healthcare provider. Sometimes we'd get somebody who told us that they went to the clinic and they were told they had to wait a month. This is with somebody who is suffering pain... This is with somebody who is suffering pain and needed to be seen right away. And us being able to have that clinic was very helpful in getting those people in right away, getting them tested, and because of our partnership with UC Davis Infectious Disease, we had the treatment and the expertise to be able to provide the treatment. Especially when the MPOCs epidemic first started out, not every county was able to provide the treatment, so we were one of the first ones, and so it was a very great resource in helping us to actually control that outbreak very quickly.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
I also want to recognize that this probably had a very positive impact in individuals not going to the ER, where it would have more of a negative impact on the ER hospitals.
Thank you for pointing that out, yes, because some of the clinics, that's what they were saying, if they were not able to do the testing, they'd say you need to go to the ER, which is more expensive and also leads to a lot more in terms of our APOC time, which we're all very aware of. So this slide is a high-level view of the budget and staffing, and our general fund is about 1.8 million. About a quarter of that is used in the clinic. One thing that we are very dependent on is federal funding. We get about 11 million, and most of that is actually federal funding. A small part of it is the state. On the next slide, I'll be able to provide some details. It doesn't come in a lump sum. It's a lot of different grants that come at different times, with different scopes of work, different requirements, different limitations. And so one of the things that we have done is to do what we call braiding, where you have one person being funded through the different funding streams, and that allows us to leverage the different funding streams and also make sure that we're able to provide the services. So if somebody comes in, you're not going to say, "Oh, I can't help you with that because my funding doesn't allow me to do that." So it really helps with being able to streamline our services. Reimbursement, we still have some work there, but I think a lot of the challenge we have is many of the people that we serve are actually either uninsured, underinsured, or are just not able to pay. And we make sure that our services are low barrier, and so we do not turn anyone away because of an inability to pay. In the lower part of the slide, you can see the expenditures, and so the clinic, as I mentioned, we started off with $600,000 in seed funding, and our staff have grown that to about $3 million. A lot of that does come from the Ryan White, and a large part of what we do is HIV care. We have about 45 FTEs, and about, so about 3.5 million is used for staffing. And then a large part also is for CBOs, and I'll discuss a little bit later why that is important. We have a lot of contracts, over 38 contracts, so we do coordinate a lot with our CBOs in the community, because this is work that we can't do by ourselves. The other thing also, like, for example, during MPOCs, when we needed to get people vaccinated, a lot of the people that we were trying to reach out to did not want to come to our clinic or did not want to deal with the government, but we partnered with Poochies, and that was a very successful partnership in making sure that people were able to get the vaccinations. So we do depend on our partners a lot.
And for Supervisor Rodriguez's benefit, Poochies is a well-known pharmacy in District 1.
Thank you. So my apologies that this slide, the letters and numbers are so small, but the main thing we wanted to show here is the different sources of funding. As I mentioned, most of them are federal funding, and actually even some of those that show up as state funding is actually passed through, where the funding comes from CDC to the state, and then the state distributes it to the counties. So with the uncertainty, with some of the changes that are going on at the federal level, there's been a lot of questions that have come to us about what's going to happen. And we've had a lot of discussions with the Director, Tim Lutz, in terms of what we'd be able to do, but this is a concern, because 11 million of our funding is, and that's the majority of our funding, is either federal or state. As I mentioned, we do a lot of braiding, so even when we show here the FTEs, it's actually pieces of individuals. So one person may be time-stating to about five different types of funds, just so that we're able to make sure that we cover the services and streamline the services. Wanted to talk a little bit also about the CBO funding, because that's another question that we've been asked. A large part of our funding does go out to the CBOs. For many of these, if we do lose our federal funding, it would be very hard for them to remain solvent, because they are very dependent on the funding that we get. And in reverse, we are very dependent on them being able to reach out to the communities that need our services. And so, again, going back to what we had talked about with some of the uncertainty, it's something that we continue to follow. Wanted to provide some highlights. I talked a little bit about the clinic. We try very hard to make sure that it's low barrier, and a lot of times, we get emails or letters from individuals that have been helped. There was one time where a young lady, a student, needed care, but needed to come to us after school, and she had to use a train and a bus in order to get to us. And as you know, with using public transportation, it took much longer, and so she kept texting the staff and saying, "Please don't cancel my appointment, I'm on my way." And the staff stayed. By the time she got there, it was 5 o'clock. Any other place would have said, "Sorry, it's too late," because usually we see our last patient at 4:30. But the staff stayed because they knew how important it was to be there for this individual at this time and be able to provide the needs. And of course, I could go on and on with different stories, but this does show some of the services, about 1,600 that have been served, and the different types of services that we provide. Then the Wellness Without Walls, this is actually, you received a presentation not too long ago. This is the mobile clinic that we collaborate with Primary Care Center on, and it shows a number of tests that we do. It's also been very, very vital, especially for those people that are unhoused. In fact, one time, when I was in a meeting for behavioral health, and they had done a survey for services among the homeless, and I remember one comment that someone said that the Wellness Without Walls is the only healthcare services that we provide, that we receive. So these are individuals who, without the Wellness Without Walls, would otherwise go without care. So it just shows how critical it is in being able to reach those that are at risk. We also have two collaboratives. One is a collaborative of our CBOs doing the testing, and then another one is for strategic planning, the SACWISH Collaborative. They do a lot of SACWISH, a lot of planning, strategic planning, and through that collaborative, actually, they've been able to apply for a lot of additional funding and help additional Wanted to talk also a little bit about the accomplishments. I'm not going to read everything to you, but you can see the number of syphilis cases that we've had to investigate. These are not easy, because you're calling somebody and having to find out all of their partners and when their symptoms started, so that you can make sure that you provide the best care. Oftentimes, unfortunately, it's in people who are childbearing age or who are pregnant. And so, as I mentioned before, because oftentimes, syphilis may present without symptoms, it's very crucial during pregnancy to get the screening, because that's the best way for us to be able to ensure that we provide treatment and protect that child, because syphilis and HIV can be passed on to the child.
If I'm not mistaken, syphilis for a child, a mother who's carrying a fetus can result by way of the birth in blindness and other complications for the baby, correct?
Absolutely, and it can lead to death as well.
So the question I have is, what's the threshold past which, at least at our health clinic, we will do a comprehensive screening of a patient, just for everything A to Z in terms of sexually transmitted infection? So maybe, you know, I don't know how they would present, but is there a general protocol where there's a comprehensive panel that is applied for everything from HIV to syphilis to gonorrhea to chlamydia?
So for our STD clinic, we do comprehensive testing when a person comes in. There is a regulation that requires testing for pregnant women as well when they go for their prenatal care, but we know sometimes, some people go really late during care or don't even go for their prenatal visits. So us being able to do outreach into the community also helps, because we're able to get those as well. Okay, I also wanted to point out that we do work with behavioral health with NACAN Distribution, and so, again, demonstration of a lot of the collaboration that we do.
Speaking of that, behavioral health, you're well-aware, Doctor, of the great efforts over multiple years that the county, working with our behavioral health and mental health nonprofit partners in the community, have for years really focused on fighting the stigma around mental health, because we want folks that are, you know, feeling that they could benefit from some form of treatment, or behavioral health for that matter, whether it be for mental health complications that come with things like substance use disorder, that we want to address the stigma as much as making sure that they are seen by the right folks, the right professionals. What do we do around testing for sexually transmitted infection around stigma? Is there anything comparable, so that people that might feel embarrassed or judged, maybe completely, it's completely not the case, but I've seen so much more around stigma and mental health than I think I ever have in the county around sexually transmitted infection?
We do a lot more of one-to-one, and actually, a lot of the funding that we provide to our CBOs is to do exactly what you said, to reduce the stigma with testing, so they go to different venues, different places that we would normally not even appear at, and they're able to do the testing. I mentioned Poochies before, and during MPOCs, they were even going to parties and setting up shop and being able to do the vaccinations. So again, the partnerships that we have with CBOs helps us in doing that a lot. On the next slide, we, oh, sorry. The outreach efforts, it does talk about some of the outreach we've done, such as talking about the importance of people getting their treatment for HIV, so that it becomes undetectable, because if it's undetectable, then it's not transmissible. But even as a part of that, being able to deal with the stigma also of individuals who are actually having to live with HIV, and helping them with different resources that they need. And also, also talking about pre-exposure prophylaxis, which we call PrEP. There's been a campaign about that, and a lot of that also is talking about the stigma and trying to reduce that stigma, so that people feel comfortable getting care, getting tested. And you did mention behavioral health. We do partner with them on a number of their collaborations, especially like the Opioid Coalition. That's one that we've been very active on, and we work with them very closely. And this is a picture of the team. I don't say it often enough, but I just want to let you all know what a well-trained, dedicated team that you have working out in the community and representing you. They do an excellent job. They provide services without judgment. They go above and beyond to provide care to individuals, and they make a difference. And as I mentioned, a lot of people have sent us emails or letters just thanking us for the work that we do, or being able to provide them the services when they needed them most. The next two are actually stories of personal impact. I will not read them to you, but I'm hoping that you did read them already, but just a sample of some of the cases where we have been able to help individuals, and of course, collectively, that this amounts to a lot of individuals that would otherwise not get the care that they need, but are able to. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present to you, and thank you for all the resources that you have provided over the years. I've just been able to try and summarize some of them, but we are very appreciative and invite you to come to the clinic again and visit for those who have not.
Very good, thank you, Doctor. Supervisor Kenny.
Thank you, Doctor, for that very thorough, yet with brevity, presentation, very appreciated. I think, you know, I really wanted to hear this information for a couple of reasons. One is to once again inform myself and the public of what we are doing, because we are doing a lot. And, you know, you folks just put your head down and do really good work, and we don't talk about it as much as we should, maybe sometimes. But we are doing good work. But also, as a cautionary note, as you alluded to, of, you know, I'm afraid of what this federal government's going to do in this area. They've already tried. They might be successful. When you have a Health and Human Services Secretary that doesn't believe in vaccinations, and, you know, you have an administration that we are heavily dependent on for federal funding, that's why I want to get the word out there that, you know, we're in trouble. We're in danger as a community throughout the country, but Sacramento County, we're in danger of losing funds that are vitally important, because these are all areas that are preventable and treatable. And we can't rest on our laurels. We can't think that, you know, we're no longer in the AIDS epidemic, and therefore, we can sit back and just let things happen. We have to stay vigilant, because we shouldn't have any more new cases as we do. It's all avoidable with PrEP and other things that are available now, that there's no reason to. So that's my little soapbox, but again, thank you for your work. The one area that I hope that we will continue to, and you talked about the outreach and the Spanish-language advertising, kudos, that's great. Old school, I still think that the old RT advertisements were very successful, not only for, as the Chair talked about stigma, but also that resources are available, and when you're sitting there at that stoplight, and there's that bus sitting in front of you, and it's right in your face, and it connects with you and where you are at that point in your life and what your needs are. It's a very cost-effective way to really get in people's, literally, in their faces. So I hope we'll continue to do those types of efforts, but thanks for everything you're doing. This is great.
Well, thank you. I couldn't have said it better in the way that you have described the situation we're in. And yes, we are concerned. We will continue to monitor and let you know. We will continue to monitor and let you know, let the CEO know if there are any concrete changes that we need to pay attention to. And as far as the bus ads, we still do have them, and we'll send you some samples so that you know that we're out there. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Casiria, for the presentation. I agree with everything Supervisor Kennedy said. I think several of us probably received correspondence from Sunburst, one of our larger providers of education, prevention, and outreach for STI and HIV. And they're looking at, as a result of the loss of federal funds, just completely, a gut check to their budget and their ability to provide these kinds of services. I guess I had a question for you or Siobhan. Are we, it sounds like they've joined together with a coalition pushing for more state funding, to advocate for more state funding, to backfill some of the loss in federal funds. Can you tell me, has there been a proposal in either the legislative budget, or their governors may revise, to provide any of that?
To my understanding, I have not seen anything new in terms of additional funding for these efforts.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything new either in the state's budget.
Okay. And then what is our strategy to working with these nonprofits to help, you know, I know there's new money from the county, but to help cushion the blow? What are some things that we are doing with them?
You know, I think, as Dr. Casiria said, we're going to just continue to monitor and hopefully support the state's efforts to continue to fight for the funding that we need in order to continue to serve the population. There is so much uncertainty still. The state, I think, is fighting to ensure public health funding continues, but I know that at the state level, there's also issues. So we're just monitoring at this point and seeing where we end up, and then we'll come back to the board, should we need to have that discussion.
And I'm sure you're plugged in to CSAT's advocacy efforts in this area as well.
Absolutely.
So let's take advantage of that and their advocacy. Okay.
And I wanted to point out also that we've had some early discussions with Director Lutz about being able to be more creative in terms of looking for additional sources of funding. Nothing definitive yet, but definitely, it's something that we are looking at, and we'll come back to you once we have a definitive plan.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Dr. Casiria? Again, appreciate the information, the report, and I know that the public appreciates it as well. And I think it was Supervisor Kennedy that wanted to have this agenda, so I do appreciate Supervisor Kennedy doing so. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone to speak?
We do. We have one person signed up to speak, Shannon Shaw.
Well, now it's afternoon. Originally, I was going to say, good morning. Good morning, Chair Serna and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Shannon Shaw. I'm the Vice President of Programs and Development at One Community Health. We are incredibly grateful for our longstanding partnership with the county, a collaboration that began with CARES back in the late '80s and present, as we are current members of the county's Planning Council and county subrecipients of Ryan White Part A and B. And in 2024, we've reported serving 2,535 patients living with HIV. Despite ongoing threats to funding and resources for HIV prevention and intervention services, our commitment to this work remains unwavering. And through integrated HIV testing linkage services into our street medicine program, championed by Chair Serna, we have expanded our diligent efforts to bring PrEP and PEP navigation supports into unhoused communities, and we remain steadfast in ensuring our community has equitable, low-barrier access to care. Thank you so much for your attention to this important matter, and thank you, Dr. Casiria, for your presentation.
Thank you, Shannon. Appreciate your partnership. Okay.
That concludes your public speakers.
Okay, very good. That was informationally correct. Okay. So next item, then.
County Executive Comments?
Thank you, Flo. Just two quick items. One, an important issue that your board had back in October of this 2024, but Joshua House Hospice is celebrating a grand opening in ribbit-cutting next week and grand opening in July. For those who are listening, I know this board is well-familiar with it, but Joshua House is the first West Coast hospice house dedicated to terminally ill, unhoused individuals. The facility provide care for up to 15 residents at a time. As a reminder, the Board of Supervisors invested over $1 million in this project, like I said, to help get the construction across the line back in October. The Joshua House will begin accepting patients in early, as early as July, I think it's July 18th is the date that they were looking, July 16th was the date they were looking at. On a separate note, this last week, we, if Metro Cable could put up the picture, on May 31st was Sacramento County Employee Appreciation Night at Sacramento Republic FC's game against Las Vegas. We had about 330 county employees and their family in attendance to watch FC Republic beat Las Vegas 4-0. It was a fun night. Dr. K, if she's still here, she was actually there, and we had a great conversation, and I had a lot of fun talking to all our employees off the clock. It was a lot of fun having those 330s. We actually took up two sections of the stands, and it was a little warm on April, on May 31st, if you can remember that. But again, it was a lot of fun celebrating and dedicated our employees. Our PIO got us some screen time on the screen during halftime, which celebrated the county's 175th year, or the demi-semi-sentennial year. I think I'm the only one that can still say that with a straight face, and I have a hard time doing that. But we had a great time. A lot of folks are there, and I appreciate the employees that got a chance to come out there. So look forward to next year. So thank you, Supervisor.
Great. And thanks to my fellow Commissioner at First Five, Scott Moke, and of course, many know him as the play-by-play announcer for Sacramento Kings. I think he also had something to do with making sure that Sacramento County employees get a recognized presence at at least one game each year, so thanks to him. Supervisor Rodriguez.
We're on Board Comments, right?
Yes.
Okay. And if we want to bring an agenda item for discussion, is that now or is that a separate?
You could ask.
Do it all now? Okay. I do want to congratulate Corporal Brian Barron of the Citrus Heights Police Department on his well-deserved retirement. With a distinguished career as a K-9 officer, detective, and skilled instructor, Brian played a vital role in shaping future officers and building strong connections with the community. Thank you, Corporal Barron, for your dedication and service. I also received a text from a friend about the Coroner's Office, and I just want to read a small, little snippet of the text. It says, "Right now, I have been dealing with things and procedures I have never imagined doing with my brother's passing, and I have to share that those who work at the Sacramento County Coroner have been absolutely awesome, so caring, compassionate, and caring and basically walked me through the steps of something very difficult. I was floored by the kindness." So passing this on to you to communicate to the CEO. And so anyways, thank you to the Coroner's Office for all their hard work. And then my request for a future agenda item. As I've been doing research, I've learned that several successful COCs, the Continuum of Care models, fall under the leadership of the county. I recognize that we used to use that model here in Sacramento, but decided to put it under the CBO during the last recession, where it has stayed since. As municipalities, counties, and cities have been called to be more accountable, I think it's time to explore whether bringing it back to the county makes sense. It may give us an opportunity to align homeless services more with other Health and Human Services that counties are responsible for. I would ask that the county exec look into this and provide a presentation outlining the pros and cons, along with a recommendation on this approach. I understand that staff are exploring alternate models for collaboration. I would ask that this be included in the analysis.
So, Siobhan, I think that's a pretty clear request in terms of, I assume by, without mentioning the name, you're talking about Sacramento Steps Forward?
Yes.
Okay. So, and if I understood the supervisor's request, it's an informational item? So I don't know if you need any further clarification?
I don't think so at this time we can do that. So Supervisor Kennedy had asked that we come back in August with the different regional models. We can certainly give some high-level thoughts to what it would look like for the county to be the lead entity for the Continuum of Care at that point. It might take a little longer for a further in-depth analysis with all the costs and benefits, but happy to bring some preliminary thoughts back at that time, if that works for the Board.
It's a good suggestion, and it's timely, because it'll, hopefully, we can have it before we have the joint city-county meeting, so we kind of get armed with a fresh understanding of where things are.
Absolutely.
Terrific.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or suggestions from my colleagues? Seeing none, if there's no further business before this Board, we adjourn to closed session.
Yes, sir.